Thank you, and you may be seated. And at this time, please help me welcome Mayor Barbara Sharif.
We just want to take this opportunity to welcome you all to the beautiful city of Pembroke Pines. Mayor Ordus and myself are very pleased to have put this together and host this today. In Broward County alone, we've had over 200 opioid-related deaths in the first six months of the year. That being said, we know that this is an issue for all 31 of our municipalities, and we are pleased to have had over 200 people RSVP to come here today. It is my pleasure and my privilege to sit and learn with you from the experts and the people that are on the streets so that we can join together and stop this crisis once and for all. Mayor Ordus, please come over.
Thank you, Mayor, for that great introduction. Good morning. Wow, what a great turnout. Thank you so much. A lot of people to thank: Mayor Sharif, Lana Carbonell, my executive assistant Karen, who's really been working, and everybody else to get this conference in order today. We had gone to the U.S. Conference of Mayors, the leadership meeting in Miami Beach, and several of -- we went to a task force on opioids. And the task force was supposed to last one hour, ended up lasting two hours. And we, the mayors that were in that meeting, after the meeting, said we need to get together and come up with a strategy to combat this horrible, horrible addiction. So we all got together, and we decided to start it with this forum. 200 have RSVP'd, so we're very happy about that. I want to first introduce my elected official from our city, Vice Mayor Angelo Castillo, Commissioner Carl Schechter, Commissioner Iris Siple, Commissioner Jay Schwartz, City Manager Charlie Dodge, our Friar Chief is here, Chief Pricorillo, Chief DeAndestino, our police chief. And with all elected officials, please stand up and be recognized. Thank you all. Thank you so much. Okay, before I introduce our Congresswoman, just to say hello. Oh, I'm sorry. Absolutely right. County Commissioners, please stand up. Vice Mayor Bingfer. Michael Udine, former mayor. And the school board member Patty Good is here. Any other school board members? Okay, again, thank you so much. I'm going to introduce our Congresswoman and say a short hello to you. But again, this morning's paper, online, there's an article about opioids and about a young woman who was in an addiction center, and they threw her out because she became pregnant. You know, all of the cities now have gone to a narc system, Mayor, you know this. In case there's an overdose, we try to revive that person and then try to get them into an addiction center. That's what this is all about. And what we're concerned about, Mayor, is we talked about the unknown. We don't know about the unknown. We think it's many, many more times than we even can understand. So again, Congresswoman, would you like to say hello? Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz.
Thank you so much, Mayor Ordus, Mayor Sharif, for your leadership in bringing our community together. Thank you to our panel of experts. Don, how are you? Good to see everybody here. I think we all wish we were here for other circumstances and under better circumstances. But we are facing a national crisis of epic proportions when it comes to the opioid crisis. No community is immune regardless of our socioeconomic status. I am really proud of our community for not sticking our heads in the sand and thinking that, you know, it's not going on here. A number of years ago, when we thought we solved the pill mill problem and shut those pill mills down, we're able to finally get legislation passed to shut them down once and for all. All that happened was a shift to fentanyl and cartilage and heroin. And this is something that colleagues from around the country, who I have spoken with, have really stressed that is urgent when it comes to providing the resources that we need to make sure that we can help people with addiction and recovery, but also to make sure that we get to the criminal justice side of this as well. Congress last year passed the Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act of 2016, authorizing $500 million to address this problem. Believe it or not, that's a drop in the bucket. We are moving through the appropriations process, as I'm a senior member of the Appropriations Committee, and will continue to fight to make sure that we can provide the resources necessary to be on the front lines to address this problem and really get in the weeds on how to solve it. It is not going to happen overnight, and it is not easy. We didn't get into this problem overnight. Most importantly, though, we also have to not be robbing Peter to pay Paul. We are in the midst of a battle over Congress actually proposing cutting funding for mental health and drug addiction programs. So if we continue to go in that direction, we are never going to address this problem. So I will continue to keep all of you updated. Please let me know how I can help, and it would be really helpful to me, as your member of Congress, for you to keep me informed on what's going on on the ground here, and I'll be spending some time with you here this morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Before I turn it back over to Mayor Sharif, we want to certainly thank our sponsors: City of Pembroke Pines, Memorial Hospital, Calvin Giordano, and of course, NOVA, a great, great institution, which we have a speaker here today, and Costco for giving us the water. So we want to certainly thank all of our sponsors. Mayor?
Yes, sir. I just love it when he bosses me around. That was a joke. We have a jam-packed agenda today, and we know with all the amazing speakers that we have, there will be questions. So in the interest of time, please hold your questions until the Q&amp;A sessions later in the morning and in the afternoon. All of the speakers will be answering your questions. They will also be around immediately following the conclusion of the meeting, so that you will have personal -- if you have a personal situation or question, please feel free to ask them at that time. At this time, I would like you to help me to welcome the platform. Our first speaker, Mr. Jim Hall. Please stand. I'm going to introduce the platform. Our second speaker, Mr. Don Mainz. Dr. G.W. Kuntzman. Dr. Craig T. Malik, our very own medical examiner. Dr. Dale E. Fahy. Ms. Heather Davidson. Ms. Sylvia Cantana. And Senator Kevin J. Rader. Please welcome them all. At this time, we'd like for you to watch a short video. Please roll the video.
The opioid epidemic has been around for years, but because of the recent uptick in overdoses and deaths, it has now taken center stage nationwide, especially here in South Florida.
This is a problem that affects everybody, not just the homeless population or the people living on the street, but doctors, lawyers, housewives. It affects everybody. Everybody has a friend or a family member that has been affected by this. You know, here at this hospital, we probably see at least one or two patients every day that are either using or overdosed on opiates.
Liz Fisher is a mom in Pembroke Pines dealing with opioid addiction.
My husband and I have four beautiful kids. They're now adult children and grew up in Pembroke Pines, and our third son is struggling with opioid addiction. I have to say, Michael was a great kid. He was the third boy, got used, you know, just was that tag-along kid, went to everything, was really easygoing, no issues in school ever, never had a call from the school with any issues, any problems. I think we really didn't know. We didn't know anything. We only started getting suspicious that something was going on when he was probably about 21. He just was not able to pay his bills, and there were things that were starting to unravel that just didn't make sense. If you just find out your loved ones struggling with addiction, and especially opioid or heroin addiction, by the time you have found out, it's pretty bad.
It just became such an important issue to me to, as I started researching it, to really see how it devastates our families and then how it devastates our communities because it destroys our families.
This inspired Commissioner Siple to introduce a resolution to the Pembroke Pines City Commission that included adopting the prescription drug monitoring program.
The resolution actually was supporting the U.S. Attorney General's request for a national database, a national prescription database. And what that would do is that it would end sort of this doctor shopping that people have done, where they can go to three, four, five, 10 doctors and get prescriptions.
So in a perfect world, the prescription drug monitoring program should be made mandatory. And there are many things that have been put in the legislative at the state levels and at the local levels to say we should make this mandatory, but it hasn't taken effect yet.
Cities across the country, just like here in South Florida, are struggling to find the right solutions to this epidemic, and everyone has ideas.
Have a community town hall, just talking, just educating families about what it looks like, what to look for, what you can do to try and prevent it, and what kind of conversations to have. A lot of people just don't know, they don't know. They don't even know where to even begin. So even just a list of phone numbers to call for treatment, for therapists, for even for the family members to get help for themselves.
Cities like Pembroke Pines, we have armed our police officers and our emergency people with a unit, so if somebody is overdosed, they can quickly give them a unit, save their life, bring them back, and hopefully then say, "We have to stop this addiction. We know how to do it. We're going to help you." We have to educate our people and our residents to let them know, "Here's what the signs are. Here's what you have to look for in kids or adults," and that's our job.
So one of the things that has been done already is tracking the data. So we need to know the magnitude of the problem. And we now know by tracking the data through the medical examiner, you know, through some of our data at the hospital level, you know, how big the problem is. You know, putting the resources together and trying to coordinate care between the hospital and the community and the behavioral health network that's in place, I think that's the biggest challenge, and that's where we're sort of looking at right now as a healthcare entity, you know, to coordinate care between the hospital and behavioral health out in the community and EMS agencies that pick these patients up and trying to work together to address the issue.
I would say that it takes a community to combat this epidemic. What we have facing us is probably unprecedented, and we have to come together. Not only is it the funds, but it's the different individuals, different professionals that are needed to combat this opioid epidemic at hand in Broward County.
By coming together as a community, there is a light at the end of the tunnel. There is a glimmer of hope in fighting this epidemic and helping those that are affected.
You know, I think the worst part about the opioid addiction is that most of these people, if they had a choice and they had the resources, would rather get off of these drugs. But unfortunately, as a society, and it's not just unique to South Florida, but as a country, we haven't put a lot of that infrastructure in place to help these people get off of these drugs. But you know, the saddest part is that most of these people, when they're sober, when you have a conversation with them, you know, would really rather be off of these drugs, but because of the physical, emotional, and psychological addiction, it's very difficult for these people to get clean.
I think, and I truly believe, as I tell people, my son has been, I mean, probably 25 treatment centers in the last four and a half, five years. And he keeps trying. He keeps trying. He keeps trying. And the goal we want for our loved ones is to get back what they lost. That, to me, is recovery. Getting back what you lost. And that means to me, being a happy, independent, productive member of society, live in their life.
Good morning. I've been asked to provide an introduction to the topic of opioids, as well as to review some of the trends of the epidemic impacting Broward County. Could we have the PowerPoints, please? This presentation will be available online, or is available online, at www.drugfreebroward, all one word, drugfreebroward.org. I'll give you that web address at the end of the presentation. Our work at NOVA Southeastern University is sponsored by and supported by the United Way of Broward County's Commission on Substance Abuse, as well as the Broward Behavioral Health Coalition and the Florida Department of Children and Families. Let's start with a definition of the word opioid. And actually, this definition has changed over the past 65 years. But going back even further, the simple definition of the word opioid is derived from the Greek word and the suffix o-i-d, or oid, meaning simply similar to, not exactly the same, but similar to, and the prefix opi for opium. Opium, of course, is the first of the opioids, and it was back to ancient times, first identified by the Assyrians, who are credited with scraping the outer, slicing the outer pod of the poppy plant for the gooey substance that is natural opium. More recently, we've turned to the definition, including a marijuana, excuse me, a morphine and similar drugs derived from opium. Morphine was developed in 1804 by a German pharmacist, and throughout the 19th century, it was used in the 330 different wars worldwide in the 19th century. Wars fought with muskets and bayonets and causing severe injuries and painful wounds to the soldiers who participated. And of course, that includes our own Civil War, and soldiers on both sides of that conflict, many of them became addicted to morphine. A more modern definition of opioid, really just having become accepted in this decade, I remember when I was in school, opioid referred to prescription opioids other than heroin. But today, the general accepted definition is all substances, both natural and synthetic or man-made, that bind to the opiate receptors in the brain and the body. There are opioid mu receptors that are found in the brain, in the spinal cord, and in the gastrointestinal tract. What are the types of opioids that we see? Well, of course, first is illegal heroin. Heroin was actually invented in 1874 and introduced by the Bayer Pharmaceutical Company in Germany, the same folks who make our baby aspirin, and was marketed in the United States as a safe and non-addictive substitute for morphine. Ooh, how we got that one wrong. Heroin was first brought under control in the United States with the Harrison Narcotics Act of 1914, and finally made illegal in 1926. By that time, there were 200,000 heroin addicts in the United States. The other type of opioids, of course, are legal prescription opioid pain relievers. And these include medicines such as oxycodone, percodan, percocet, oxycontin, hydrocodone, loratab, loracet, methadone, morphine, and pharmaceutically-produced prescription fentanyl, often available in a dermal patch, as well as about 10 or 12 other regular medications that are opioids similar to the morphine, containing the morphine molecule. More recently, just in the last three years, opioids now also include illicitly manufactured, non-pharmaceutical opioid analogues or chemical cousins from foreign clandestine labs, particularly China, some in Mexico, and perhaps Canada. These include the fentanyl analogues, not the pharmaceutical product, as well as U4700 and others. These analogues are sold as heroin itself or as adulterants to heroin, and we even find them now in street cocaine samples, as well as other drugs. And the analogues have also been involved in counterfeit prescription medications. That's what killed Prince. And it also has killed Floridians. Nine people died in Pinellas County in 2016 from fake Xanax pills that actually were a fentanyl. Here you see the real Xanax tablet and the fake, pretty similar in size, but just a little thinner, and the same markings on the fake pill. This is particularly dreadful because people who would even be abusing alprazolam or Xanax would not necessarily have any tolerance whatsoever to an opioid, so even just the first use would lead to death, as it did in Pinellas County. This is an example of a rather sophisticated electronic pill press machine that's sold by the same labs that make the clandestine fentanyl and other opioid analogues. And it's a little expensive, but it can produce, in its first run, with about a kilogram of fentanyl, maybe about $20 million in sellable street product. So this is why we are seeing a proliferation of counterfeit pills, and the market for pills is much larger than the market specifically for heroin. So that's been a business plan of the opioid traffickers. This particular machine was seized by the Royal Canadian Mounted Police, but we've had seizures in the United States, particularly in California and other states, of these pill presses. This is an epidemic of deaths. While there are nearly 300,000 opioid current, or excuse me, heroin current users in the United States today, we have seen not so much a dramatic increase in the number of users, but the people who are involved are most likely to become addicted and are dealing with the most toxic and poisonous drug that is responsible for truly an epidemic of deaths. The graph on the bottom green line shows the rise of heroin occurrences in deceased persons in Florida through the first decade of this century, while our pill mills were in operation. And then we see, starting in about 2013, a dramatic escalation in the number of heroin-related deaths in Florida. This is not only due to the fact that we cracked down on pill mills, but more importantly, because this is the time period when we start to see a dramatic increase in the availability of Mexican heroin in the eastern United States, including Florida. The red graph line shows the rise of fentanyl-related deaths. In the last decade, those averaged between about 200 and 300 a year in Florida, and most of those were pharmaceutical fentanyl. But beginning in 2014, we see a dramatic escalation projected to reach nearly 2,000 in 2016, based on the data from the first half of that year. And most all of those new fentanyl cases are the poisonous clandestine lab fentanyl analogues from China. In addition to these, we also had over 6,000 prescription opioid occurrences in deceased persons in Florida in 2016. Now, an occurrence means that the drug is detected in the deceased person, and it may be ruled either as a cause of death or merely determined to be present by the local medical examiners. However, the number of occurrences is greater than the number of actual deaths because of polysubstance abuse. Most all of the decedents that we see of opioid-related causes have at least one or more other drugs besides the key opioid that may be responsible for their death. Nationwide, the figure most frequently quoted is that we are seeing 91 deaths a day in the country from opioid epidemic across the nation. That is a way conservative low number. First of all, it's a 2015 number, and the real impact of the fentanyl analogues and increased heroin deaths are occurring in 2016 and 2017. As well, the national data are based on a uniform system of review of death certificates, and not all death certificates on the front page specifically cite that this was an opioid overdose, so it's an undercount. In Florida, we have a better system, thanks to our Florida Medical Examiner's Commission, which is based on actual toxicology reports from autopsies performed. And in Florida, we are seeing in 2016 an estimated 14 or more deaths a day across the state of Florida, plus an additional 27 non-fatal opioid overdoses that make it to a hospital and get admitted, diagnosed as an opiate poisoning case in a Florida hospital. Here in Broward County, we are averaging about 10 opioid deaths a week, plus 17 non-fatal opiate overdose hospital cases. And in 2017, all we have are anecdotal and early reports, but nationwide, as well as across Florida and here in Broward County, we believe that the death rate is still increasing. Let's go back a decade or so, and our famous Fort Lauderdale pill mills. The 22 people in line waiting to get into this, quote, "pain clinic" are actually carrying probably about, combined together among the whole crowd, $40,000 in cash that they will use to purchase a combination of oxycodone, mainly oxycontin, the extended released form, plus alprazolam or Xanax, and the muscle-relaxant soma or carosoprodol. That was the typical cocktail sold directly from the clinic by dispensing practitioners. Back in 2009, we went to the DEA and said, "Could you give us the zip code of, say, top 50 in the nation of dispensing practitioners of just oxycodone?" And a dispensing practitioner is the physician who directly sells the product to, not writing a prescription and going to a pharmacy to fill. It's not a number of prescriptions written. It was direct sales from the so-called pain clinics. And the billboard that you see on the screen was what we saw on the Interstate 75 and Interstate 95 throughout Florida, "Pain Clinic Next Exit." It's interesting to note that most all of those billboards were found in the southbound lanes, as Florida really became inuated by literally pill tourists. When we got the results from the DEA, we said, "Well, okay, this is the top 50 in Florida. How about the top 50 in the United States?" And they responded, "Mr. Hall, that is the top 50 in the United States." 49 of the top dispensers, direct practitioners of oxycodone in the first, in the last three months of 2008 and the first three months of 2009, 49 of them were in Florida. The other one was in South Ohio, Southern Ohio. But of those 49, 25 were in Broward County. We truly were the pill mill capital of the nation, and that is the origin of the opioid epidemic in our community, as well as our state and across particularly the eastern United States. This is a little bit more technical slide, showing in the blue bars the number of morphine milligram equivalents. That's how we measure opioid prescriptions, so that a 5-milligram of one pill or an 80-milligram of another pill are equated out with what are called morphine milligram equivalents. Back in 2010, at the peak of the pill mills, we had in Broward County 1,371 per 100,000 milli ---- per hundred thousand um milic um morphine-milligram equivalents. That number has dramatically dropped uh down to five-hundred-and-nineteen by 2015, and we see a similar decline of much lower numbers in neighboring Miami-Dade County and much higher, not much higher, but somewhat higher numbers in neighboring Palm Beach County. The national averages were uh got went from seven-hundred-and-eighty-two with a smaller decline uh to six-hundred-and-forty in 2015. But just for reference, back before the twenty-first century, the national rate was a hundred-and-eighty morphine-milligram equivalents per one-hundred-thousand population, so we are still well above those numbers in prescribing of opioids. This tracks the number of prescription opioids used non-medically detected in deceased persons in Florida, going back from 2005. Here's the rise of the pill mill phenomena, doctor shopping abounding, no prescription drug monitoring program, which made us the key target for these operations. And then we see, starting legislative action by the state, uh first a ban on direct dispensing to a limited number of days, and then at the black line at the same time that we saw the reformulation of OxyContin to an abuse deterrent uh formulation that could not be as easily crushed and taken all at once. The green line shows the impact of the pill mill strike force in the state, and the red line shows the establishment of the prescription drug monitoring program. It took us six years, and Broward County was in the lead in getting this legislation ultimately adopted for the state of Florida, and we see the corresponding decline in the number of opioid-related deaths. Unfortunately, we see those have started to rise again. These are driven mostly by morphine, which we'll see in a minute is very much related to just heroin, as well as the fentanyl analogs arriving. But the one prescription opioid that we are seeing rising in the most recent years is oxycodone again. Here in Broward County is the number of heroin deaths, rising from just eleven in 2013 to a projected hundred-and-forty-four for 2016, based on the first half of that year. Of the six 2016 cases, ninety-six percent of the heroin occurrences were considered a cause of death, and ninety-two percent were found in combination with another drug. This is the rise for fentanyl-related deaths. This is by semi-annual reporting periods from the first half of 2014. That's where we start to see the rise and the arrival of fentanyl analogs. And Dr. Malik was one of the first people in the country to give us the alert to this while we were dealing with the Flaca epidemic in 2015. Uh and then we see the very significant rise as fentanyl and carfentinel arrive in 2016, but this is only the first half of 2016, and I think Dr. Kuntzman and Dr. Malik will tell us in the second half of 2016, we see an even greater number of particularly carfentinel cases as well as other fentanyl analog cases. This is an escalating epidemic of death. Ninety-seven percent of these uh fentanyl cases in the first half of 2016 were considered the cause of death. Eighty-six percent were found present with another drug. This is just an overview for um the number of opioid cases detected in Broward County, going through the last three semi-annual reporting periods that are available, from the first half of 2015 to the second half of that year and the first half of 2016. The blue line is the number of morphine-related deaths. Now, many of these are actually heroin, because as our medical examiner friends will tell us, uh many uh heroin deaths, heroin rapidly metabolizes to morphine once inside the human body. So unless we have a intermediate metabolite of six monocetic morphine, uh many heroin deaths actually get counted as morphine-related deaths. We see a parallel line of heroin itself, uh going from thirty-four in the first half of 2015 to the seventy-two cases for the first half of 2016. But the real story is the red line, that's the rise again of the fentanyl analogs, um and then the green line just shows three other key prescription uh opioids, which remain relatively stable, but also seeing that oxycodone is the one prescription opioid that we see increasing in our most recent reporting periods. Here's just a a table that will be in the PowerPoint uh chart that you can download if you want to have all of the numbers that we've seen in the previous graphs, but leading is, of course, fentanyl, followed by morphine, many of which are heroin, and then heroin itself. This graph tracks the same data again, with the blue line of each uh opioid being the total number of occurrences in Broward County, and then the green bar being the number of those that are considered a cause of death. And then the red line graph shows the percent of those occurrences which were considered the cause of death. So ninety-seven percent of the fentanyl cases, ninety-six percent of the heroin cases, sixty-seven percent of the only six methadone cases in the first half of the year uh were considered the cause of death. Basically, in 2015, we had three-hundred-and-thirty-two opioid overdose deaths in Broward County. That number increased to five-hundred-and-twenty-two estimated for 2016, and in the first six months of 2017, there have been two-hundred-and-eighty-two, and there's still more cases pending, overdoses, and this is from, I believe, all drugs, not just opioids, but the great majority of these would be opioid-related deaths. We've also seen a a significant number here in the first six months of 2016 of four-hundred-and-twenty-one opiate overdose poisoning cases that make it to a Broward County hospital and get diagnosed as an opioid poisoning, either for a prescription opioid or for heroin. This is the number of crime lab cases for the various opioids in Broward County in 2016, and the percent of those cases which uh of the total number of crime lab cases. For the last thirty years, the number-one drug in crime lab cases in South Florida, of course, has been cocaine, followed by marijuana, but heroin made it to number three in 2016, and we see oxycodone, fentanyl, hydromorphone, buprenorphine, hydrocodone, morphine, carfentinel specifically, methadone and furantal fentanyl, uh all in there for about twelve-hundred crime lab cases. These are just substances that are seized in regular law enforcement activity and analyzed by the Broward Crime Labs, both federal as well as our Broward Sheriff's Office Crime Lab. The important thing about medical examiner data and the crime lab data is this is where we get an actual analysis of the exact drug that is involved. That's why these are such important indicators. This is a very complex graph. We won't go into detail, but it shows from nineteen ninety nineteen seventy-seven to 2015, the source countries or source regions of the world for the heroin in the United States. The green bars are Mexico, which we see predominated in the late nineteen seventies and then diminishing somewhat. The purple is from South American heroin, which is what we had been seeing since nineteen-ninety, primarily here in South Florida as our major source of heroin. But look at the dramatic increase in Mexican heroin in the last two reporting years, that's 2014 and 2015. Now ninety-five percent of the heroin seized in uh law enforcement activity and as analyzed by the DEA Signature Program is from Mexico. So that increase in Mexican heroin is a critical factor in the rising number of opioid-related Let's look at what are the specific symptoms of opium withdrawal. Nausea, sweating, cramps, vomiting, diarrhea, insomnia, loss of appetite, agitation, irritability, mood swings, depression, anxiety, muscle soreness, aching bones, fever, runny nose, twitching. That's what the morphine molecule does in demanding of the human brain, as it rewires the circuitry of the brain, and these craving effects generally come on a daily basis to an addict who definitely needs to have their opioid dose in order just to feel somewhat normal. These are the worst case of flu symptoms that you can imagine, and will continue uh till the individual uh finally is detoxed or gets another opioid. Thus, in the storm of narcotic withdrawal, any opiate port will do, and that's why we see the switch from whether it's a prescription pharmaceutical pill or street heroin, or even a counterfeit pill containing fentanyl analogs, the user is desperate to receive them. This is the most serious withdrawal symptoms we see of most any drug, and it's which referred to as being dope sick. An addiction is the affliction. One of the things that's rather underreported is the impact on young children of the opioid epidemic. This amazing statistic from the Florida Behavioral Health Association tells us that seventy-eight percent, more than three-fourths of all children in Florida's childcare system are there because of a parent's substance use disorder, and in the last few years, that is primarily an opioid use disorder of addiction. I don't show that famous photo of the child in the backseat with the grandmother and the gentleman friend both passed out from an overdose. Uh it's just too stark, uh and we also get, say, questions raised of, "Why weren't they administering naloxone instead of taking the picture?" Uh nonetheless, that woman survived and the man survived, but died the following week of a uh opioid overdose. Probably will be the news photo of the year. We also have seen a dramatic rise in the number of neonatal abstinence syndrome cases in the state of Florida, going from five-hundred-and-thirty-six in 2007 to nearly twenty-five-hundred in 2015, which is the most current data available on these cases. Neonatal abstinence syndrome is a baby born in withdrawal. The Palm Beach Post did an analysis and determined that some of those cases, the medical cost is a million dollars per infant. In Broward County, we've seen the numbers rise from twenty-nine uh in 2007, steadily increasing to ninety-six in 2015. Thank goodness we have Memorial Hospital's maternal addiction program, which probably keeps that number lower than it would be otherwise. We're near the end of the graphs. This is the percent of substances in primary addiction treatment admissions in Broward County, going back to 2009 up through 2016. The blue part of the bar graph is for alcohol, the number-one uh drug of prevalence use in society. The red portion of the bar graph is cocaine, but the black part is heroin specifically, and the purple part of the bar graph is prescription opioids. And we see that those two combined together as the opioid treatment admissions have gone from just eight percent of all admissions, including alcohol, in 2009, to now thirty-six percent, more than a third, of all addiction treatment missions in Broward County. The impact that this is having on our addiction treatment services is overwhelming and is seen statewide and nationwide as well. One other fact, while it's not an opioid, has been the rising number of cocaine deaths, which peaked in the state in the red line in 2007, and then we've seen a somewhat of a decline through recent years, but then uh starting to rise again in 2014, fifteen, and sixteen. And we see that increase also in Broward County in 2015 and sixteen, where we had the highest number of cocaine-related deaths in our history. Now, that's because there's dramatic more cocaine available, production increased in Colombia doubled between 2015 and 2016, various political reasons we can go why that happened. As well, the Caribbean corridor for cocaine trafficking has reopened, which had basically shifted to the Pacific Ocean for bringing cocaine into the United States, but as of the spring of 2016, we are seeing much more cocaine moving through the Caribbean corridor with Florida in the bull's eye. But we did an analysis of cocaine-caused deaths back in 2015, and what other drugs were found in those decedents. We talked about the polysubstance abuse patterns that we see. Thirty-two percent of deaths considered caused by cocaine also had morphine present, and probably many of those are heroin. Not surprising, thirty-one percent had alcohol, but twenty-nine percent had heroin itself, and another twenty-five percent, and this is in 2015, already had fentanyl present. We also see codeine, oxycodone, hydromorphone in these drugs. So one of the issues is, is carfentinel and other fentanyl or heroin being mixed with cocaine intentionally by users, or is it being mixed and sold as just cocaine unknowingly to users who then may not have tolerance to opioids and are dying because they have a low tolerance? What we have is an epidemic, once again, of addiction or the opioid use disorders, and an epidemic of deaths. And together, the multiple factors contributing to this epidemic is literally the perfect storm. Whether it begins with a legitimate and necessary prescription for pain relief from an accident, from an injury, from a chronic pain, uh but often for too long of a period of time, without monitoring and control by the prescribing physician, or whether it's individuals just intentionally seeking for pleasure, the effects and euphoria of an opioid drug, whether they got them from a pill mill, and by the way, while we've closed most of the pill mills, there are still pill mill operations going on in Florida, with not direct dispensing, but questionable pharmacy prescriptions being written, or just buying in the illicit street market. Either way, tolerance develops with continued use, and thus the individual needs more and more powerful dose levels of the opioid as part of their OUD or opioid use disorder. We're using that term in lieu of the word addiction, but driven by the withdrawal dope-sick phenomena that we discussed. Then we've seen the dramatic increase of Mexican heroin, which previously was primarily seen just west of the Mississippi River and was considered relatively a lower grade of heroin. However, that has been fortified with the fentanyl analogs that we discussed, as well as other uh illicitly manufactured opioid analogs. Adding to the development of the storm is the issue of polysubstance abuse. This is a major shift in twenty-first-century drug issues. No longer do we even talk about drug of choice. It's usually a combination. Leading the formula as the ultimate mixer is the seven-up of street drugs, Xanax or alprazolam. A study we did back a few years ago, eighty percent of all O- OxyContin deaths in the state of Florida also had one or more benzodiazepine, such as alprazolam or Xanax, on board at the time of death. But as we saw before, cocaine and opioids, marijuana, alcohol, or whatever is feeding polysubstance abuse patterns. Then contributing to the hurricane, now moving to a category-four storm, is the counterfeit pills that we've talked about, when users don't even know what they're taking and might even think that they aren't even a opioid itself. Then we have the phenomena of an individual going through a Then we have the phenomena of an individual going through a relatively short period of abstinence, whether it's spending a few weeks in jail, or twenty-one days in a treatment program and then being discharged. And once they're out of prison, or out of jail, or out of their treatment program, they are most likely candidates for relapse. They go back to the same level they used just before they began the abstinence, and now they've lost the tolerance, so they have an overdose. So these are the combined factors influencing the impact of the epidemic. And there is an emergency exit. That includes multiple strategies, including naloxone distribution to save lives. Unfortunately, the price of naloxone has been dramatically increased by pharmaceutical companies. We need to, in whatever healthcare plan is adopted by Congress, to include both the bulk purchasing ability of naloxone, as well as mandated insurance coverage of naloxone for everyone who's prescribed legitimately a prescription opioid and for first responders to have available. We certainly need to focus on appropriate medical education and prescribing guidelines according to the Center for Disease Control Prescription Guidelines for doctors, dentists, physician assistants, and nurse practitioners, all of whom can prescribe opioids in Florida. We also need intervention training for families to be aware of what are the types of various treatment options available, how to work with an addict and help them to seek and want to have and accept treatment. These skills are vital. Probably every one of us knows at least one family that has been impacted by this, whether that family yet knows it or not. But it is an incredibly number of families that are impacted. And families and significant others of those afflicted need to know how to deal with that problem. We certainly need to increase treatment availability. That means more funding. That also means more quality treatment. And it's important to note that Florida, while it's received some bad publicity by some rather questionable programs operating as treatment programs, really has some of the finest quality of behavioral health and substance abuse treatment services in the nation. And those programs are here, but they are desperately underfunded. We're forty-ninth out of fifty states in funding for treatment, and we definitely need to be expanding their availability. And to incorporate medically assisted treatment, while this is a somewhat controversial issue by longtime and professional clinicians, the key word here is assisted. Medical, medicine will not replace recovery, but it can be an important tool in ending the craving for addicts who are in the process of treatment, and not as a lifelong tool, but as a aid to get them going. And incorporate it with intensive outpatient services, because we need to think of treatment as being in terms of chairs as well as in terms of beds, at least we're making it more affordable. And finally, we need to have recovery support systems that work across community levels. I want to recommend for reading the book Dreamland, if you haven't seen it, by Sam Quinones, which is a true story of the opiate epidemic and its rise from the pharmaceutical misconduct of promoting opioid drugs as being non-addictive to the whole rise and shift in Mexican heroin trafficking in the United States. The book ends in its epilogue with this sentence addressing what to do about the problem. "Nobody can do it on their own, but no drug dealer, nor cartel can stand against families, schools, communities, churches, united together." And that's what Broward County is doing. Our community response team, which you'll hear about later today, that helped end the FLACA epidemic in Broward County, is now taking on the opioid epidemic. And as I promised, this presentation, as well as our annual Broward Drug Trends Report, may be downloaded from www.drogfreebroward.org. Drugfreebroward.org, all one word. Select Know the Facts from the Homepage menu and scroll down to Trends Reports. I thank you so much for your kind attention to this very complex issue. It's now my honor to bring to the podium Don Mainz from the Broward Sheriff's Office, who will continue our presentations.
Well, thank you, Jim. Great presentation. I'm glad to see this crowd out here today, because we have to start looking about this problem in a different way. I've been doing this for a little over thirty years now, and I'm very heavily involved in substance abuse and treatment in the community. I've been on the vice president of the Advisory Board of Bark for about twenty-five years now. I'm on the Board of House of Hope. I'm on the Broward County Commission on Substance Abuse for the Board of Governors. And just to say that, thirty years ago, we thought that crack cocaine was probably the worst drug we were ever going to see. But never once during that time did we have to get up and address an audience like we're doing today about the devastation. You know, the most you would say back then is, you're going to lose your ambition, you're going to lose your family, you're going to lose your job, it's illegal, you're going to get arrested. But we're going to tell you about synthetic drugs today, and what Dr. Malik, Dr. Kuzman are going to tell you, you do synthetic drugs, you're going to die. Period. March fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, the community of Pompano Beach came out, the Sheriff Scott Israel. It says, Sheriff, there's some new drug on our streets. It's devastating, it's devastating our people, zombie-like behavior, we don't know what it is. I happened to meet the sheriff that same night at another fundraiser, and he said, Don, what's this new drug? And I didn't even know. But starting that Monday with Executive Director David Scharf and myself being tasked by the sheriff, because the sheriff said, we got to get out in front of this, we got to help the people of Broward County. So we did. And we started doing interviews. And that's when we put together the first-ever in the country partnership between the United Way of Broward County, Broward Sheriff's Office, Fort Lauderdale Police, the United Way, Broward Medical Center, the medical office. And we all worked together to combat that problem, that epidemic. We, uh... With the partnership that we had with Broward Health, I don't know if anyone here remembers Dr. El Sanati. He was the CEO of the Broward Healthcare System. But before he passed about a year and a half ago, he did a PSA, which I'd like to show. But what I want to tell you about this presentation today... Here it is. If you can see right there, it says approved for Broward County schools. We have to start looking at drugs in a different way. The war on drugs is lost. Just say no is the most ridiculous statement I ever heard. We have to start looking at it as a brain disease that's completely preventable and completely treatable. Just as Dr. Jim Hall said, it's all in the brain, and I'm going to show you some slides later on, but I want to give you a little outline of how we got to where we are, the progression of the drugs. You know, we got ahead, and we did a real good job, as we thought, about getting rid of FLACA. And we weren't dealing or showing FLACA in the slides that much, we weren't addressing it, but FLACA is back. FLACA is back with a vengeance. Back when, in the middle of the FLACA epidemic down here in Broward County, it was contacted by New York City, Hundred Twenty-Fifth Street in Harlem. An activist there said, there's some new drug on their streets, devastating their people, zombie-like behavior, and they said it was synthetic marijuana. Well, down here, we said, nah, it can't be, it's got to be FLACA. Well, as it turns out, it was synthetic marijuana. You know, the Chinese government, or the Chinese, one of their biggest crops that most of us don't realize is tobacco. So they found a new way to get rid of their tobacco crop. They chop up the tobacco and they spray it with an average of four different cathinones, which is alpha PVP, bath salts, moly, FLACA. It's the same thing. They change the analogs weekly, so that it's, you can't make it illegal because they keep changing it, and you really can't come up with a drug test for it, because it costs too much for drug testing companies to try to retool their equipment to do drug testing. So we've got a major problem with this coming in now, and it's a lot of the same behavior at any time as FLACA was. So I want to address that a little bit and just give you a little history about how we got to where we are today, and then I'll get to the opioid epidemic that we're dealing with, but just a little bit of history. As I said, I'd like to start out with the PSA that Dr. El Sanati did on synthetic drugs.
What is FLACA? This is FLACA. This is FLACA. And this is FLACA. FLACA is a new synthetic drug obtained from China. It promises good times, but delivers something else.
As a naked, greedy, using, rip the flesh off the face of a homeless man, Ronald Popo, in the middle of the day by Saturday, bewildered drivers began calling 911. What the world says is feeling the pain of drug users going for the cheap high, that law enforcement calls five-dollar ecstasy.
One of the key things about FLACA is that you can get it for just five dollars, which makes it easy to get it, but this cheap high has the potential for a costly enemy. Basically, a person believes that there's something going on with them, happening to them, that is totally disconnected from reality. It creates their own reality within their own brain, which is very, very dangerous. They perceive danger where there is no danger. It can be snorted, it can be injected, it could be ingested, goes to the brain very quickly and blocks nerve management of the normal brain cell function. And what happens with that? All of a sudden, the brain is perceiving external reality that doesn't exist. It becomes a state of denial. They go absolutely crazy.
Lose the sound? And that went up to almost two thousand by December of that year. All right, I think they fixed a little technical difficulty here. But you heard Dr. El Sanati say, they perceive danger where there is no danger. It changes the chemistry of the brain. And that went up to, as you saw in two thousand and fifteen, by December of that year, that went up to eighteen-hundred-and-sixty-eight, uh, reported incidences of that. What I want to start now is getting into a little bit of the history. And as I said before, this, and we really have to thank the school board, and I think Patty is here today, they gave us a, or they had a proclamation a day before yesterday declaring August thirty-first as Drug Awareness Day in Broward County, and October being Drug Awareness Month. But what's important about that is, and as I said, we have to start looking at this as a brain disease, and we have to start with children at a younger age, and look more maybe into the addictive gene and lower dopamine levels and things like that. So when they do turn eleven, twelve, thirteen years old, and they try marijuana or alcohol for the first time, it's not the answer to all their problems, that they felt joy inside and they feel like they fit in before that time. But this has been approved by the school board, and it's taken about three years now. But starting next month, this has been approved for all the high schools, and it should be approved for the middle schools. And we put together a speakers bureau with our partnership with the United Way and the DEA and Broward Sheriff's Office, to train speakers that will all be in tune with this presentation to bring it into the schools. But everybody remembers back eight, ten years ago in Spicing K2, all the convenience stores, and we finally got ahead of that. And then the first pure synthetic drug, which wasn't MDA, was bath salts. Does anyone know how bath salts got its name, or how do you think bath salts got its name? Most people say because it looks like bath salts, and you're absolutely right. And you wouldn't believe how many people went to Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, bought bath salts, and thought they were going to get high. And then we went to moly, and the center there is FLACA in a capsule, which you can go to the flea market, and you buy the five-dollar bags or the capsules, and that's what they fill it up in. And then down in that lower left corner right there, that little glob, that's butter, wax. When that first came out, the way you would do that was called dabbing. All the kids on the street now, or anyone else, call that dabs now. But the way it first came out was dabbing. Back when I was a kid, the THC level in marijuana was about three to five percent back in the hippie days. Then hydroponas came out and some of the stronger strains of marijuana, which raised it up to fifteen to twenty percent that we thought was mind-boggling. Well, this is just another process. It's just marijuana. There's nothing else laced into that. But it's a new process. They soak it in a solvent, usually butane. And as it soaks through the butane, it comes out looking in that globby substance right there, looking like wax or butter. That is eighty-five to ninety-five percent THC. Mind-blowing. Most every kid that you see on the street with a vapor cigarette has got some sort of a drug in it, and it's usually that butter or wax liquefied into what's called honey oil. You know, they're not old enough that they need to be getting off nicotine, and they're not smoking it just for the flavors, they've got something in the vapor or the electronic cigarette. Here's the science. The first pure synthetic drug, like I said, was bath salts, MDPV. It was coming in, we had a problem with it, went back to China, got China to outlaw it. Well, they're making too much money on it. So they tweaked a molecule up on top. They tweaked a molecule, and they came up with methyloate, which is aka moly. Everybody's heard of moly. You know how moly got its name? Usually when I ask somebody, some young person, they tell me about this beautiful-looking woman, Molly, with this long, black, flowing hair. But what did they do? They tweaked a molecule, and they came up with moly. Molly for molecule. It's that simple. Had the same problem, making too much money, had a problem, went back to China, got it outlawed, tweaked a molecule, and came up next generation, aka FLACA, and ethylone. It's all a methamphetamine high. But what I want you to see about this slide is the most important thing, it's all the same drug. Can you see that? Alls they did was tweak a molecule. It's the same drug. It's a cathinone, it comes from the cat plant. But these drugs are so dose-specific that any variation, any change, changes the effect of the drug. Now, all the bad guys were trying to do here was skirt the law. The added effect was, every time they tweaked a molecule, there was a different effect to the drug, to where you had bath salts, where you didn't really see any excited deliriums to where you got to alpha PVP from tweaking that drug, and that could just be cooking at a different temperature, adding baking soda, or any little variation. And the Chinese government doesn't have a Food and Drug Administration, so they can switch one chemical for another. So any little change changes the effect of the drug. But these are still cathinones. That's still what we're dealing with today in synthetic marijuana. And FLACA itself is still back on the streets, it's just tweaked other molecules. Here we had moly, then we had ethylone, now the new moly on the street is dibutalone. We don't know everything about dibutalone yet. We know the one kid that was in Toquesta, that left the parents at the restaurant, killed the two people in the garage, was eating the one man's face off. He was an athlete. He was a wrestler, bodybuilder, but he did a lot of YouTube videos for steroid abuse. It came back that there was no other drug in his system. But then two weeks later, another 19-year-old in Pinellas County by Tampa dove through a plate glass window. The woman in the house is beating him over the head with aluminum baseball bat while her son was trying to hold him down. Another steroid abuser. So you look at that, it might be roid rage. But what we found out about him was that he was in Margate, Florida that morning and he bought what he thought was Molly, but it was dibutalone. Jury's still out on this, but with him, we know that he was a steroid abuser and he was done dibutalone. What brought on that behavior? I mean, here we have two young people, athletes, great shape, but steroid abusers. So like I said, we're still out on that and don't know the final outcome. Remember the scientific chart? That's ethylone. That's just gummy bear candy. If there was a bowl of that on the table, I know I would, I'd be taking a handful of it. Because here it is, right here. These are, just saw these the other day when I was in Office Depot, Harbro candy, looks identical to that. That sugar looking coating on the outside of that candy is ethylone, which is Flaca, which is Molly, which is bath salts. Remember, it's all cathinones. We had an incident last school year, Indian Creek Middle School in Coconut Creek. Kid brought it to school. It's in our schools in Broward County. That happened to be a mother that made it up to give to her son to bring to school. I guess she thought she was being a buddy or something. Two days after that incident, I went to the school for the parents and did a presentation. But it's that easy to do. So it is all over. When this video came out, we thought this was a Flaca video. This turned out to be synthetic marijuana. Just wanted to save some time, I'll skip over a couple of videos. But just to let you know that all these videos were just taken by somebody with a cell phone camera. That they weren't rehearsed or that just happened to be, and you'll hear people laughing in the background because of the behavior. Well, it is funny. You know, they're jumping around, they take their clothes off, they're naked. But I call them victims. Because at that point, when their clothes are off and they're going through what's called excited delirium, their body temperature is going up between 105 and 108 degrees. At that point, their muscles start to melt. And as their muscles melt, it releases a protein into the bloodstream, which clogs up the liver and kidney. That process is called rhabdomyolysis. We had, it was only reported of 63 Flaca-related deaths. But we had 1,868 incidents that went to the emergency room in that period of nine months. I wish we kept better statistics about how many of those 1,868 people wound up on dialysis and colostomy bags for the rest of their life. And then also the statistic about how many jumped off bridges and drowned in the New River? How many jumped off buildings, committed suicide? How many ran in front of cars and got killed? You know, the medical examiner will tell you, he can only list the amount of the substance that's in the body or the cause of death. So those are all listed as suicides. But if you could take the drug that was in the system at the time, you'd see that it was Flaca. So that 63 reported deaths would probably be well over 1,000. Oh, here's what I just show you, the butter, the shatter. That little piece right there is the size of a dose, about the size of a Tic Tac is all it takes to smoke. And then this and the butter liquefied is what's called honey oil. And that's what they put into the vapors and they're smoking honey oil. But the problem is, they're smoking all day long. They're smoking before school. We had some middle school kids in school. They take, the teacher leaves the room, they can take the vapor out, they hit it, they blow the vapor into the sleeve, they swish it away because there's no odor. So they can do this all day long. We all know that our brains aren't developed till we're 25 years old. So if they start smoking this 11, 12, 13, 14 years old, they're completely recirciting the brain. They are never going to be who or what they would have been. I mean, just from the beginning, it lowers your IQ 10 points. That's just the start. And now they're recirciting the brain, so they're never going to be what they would have been. Here's some of the advertising in the stores. Here's the favorite one here, Scooby Snacks. But you see, it says right here, Poopery. What I told you about the call that we got from Harlem, 125th Street in New York, where we're dealing with the Flaca here, that was the packaging that they were putting it in. This is what we're seeing on the streets here in Broward County now. All these bright colors, fake pot, spice, K2. That's mostly all tobacco sprayed with cathinones. Remember, what's a cathinone? It's the same thing as Flaca, same thing as bath salts, same thing as Molly. It's just tweaked. So at any point, some kid smoking synthetic marijuana can go into excited deliriums and have the same behavior. What does it bring on? Tachycardia, hallucinations, convulsions, high blood pressure, paranoia and heart attacks. Here's the electric pens. And you can see these, these are still in all the gas stations. You can find these everywhere. And what they do with these electric pens, and you can see how they advertise them, Golden Goat, Connie Chung, Hashberry, they open that up and they put a glob of that butter on the battery. And that's how they smoke the butter in the glob form and not being liquefied. But again, kids are smoking all day long. When you smoke synthetic marijuana, it releases a serotonin in the brain to make you feel high, to make you feel good, make you feel like you fit in, let you feel happy. Well, now they're smoking all day long. So they're releasing all the serotonin that's in the brain. They take another hit because they want to feel high again, but there's no more serotonin to be released. They don't get that bump, they don't get high. They just get more depressed. Because they never let the brain make up the time to manufacture any more serotonin. So what happens? They keep getting depressed. And what's it like with most teenagers? Life sucks and it's not going to get any better. So now we have kids committing suicide because they were smoking synthetic marijuana and they get overly depressed. Or the respiratory system shuts down and then they stop breathing and they wind up on life support. With this here, just average percentage past 30-day marijuana use by states, medical and full legal statutes. In our schools, 12- to 17-year-olds, right here, 6% of the kids are smoking marijuana anyway. But now you get a state where you legalize medical marijuana. That jumps up to 8.5%. And then a state where you have full legalization of marijuana, that jumps up to 11.3%. It's not because they're getting medical marijuana cards or availability, it's just the acceptance. And as you have more acceptance, the more young kids are going to start smoking marijuana. We've done a real good job on cutting down on nicotine and tobacco. But here's just the statistic of sixth graders, and this is Broward County School right now, not the state of Florida, Broward County. 1.1% of sixth graders are smoking cigarettes. 2.8% are smoking vapors. Go up to 10th graders, 6.4% are smoking cigarettes and 14.2% are smoking vapors. Vapors are not a safe alternative. There are at least 10 different chemicals known to cause cancer, birth defects, other reproductive harm. The lungs can only process a certain amount of liquid. So when the vapor hits the lung, it processes half that liquid, the other half goes to the bottom of the lung, staying there, winding up causing emphysema or other problems. As a medical examiner will tell you, now they find out in autopsies, some of the lungs of these people that have died look like popcorn. Hence they're calling it popcorn lung because with a vapor, the temperature is closer to 1,000 degrees when it hits the lung. Cigarettes are about 650 degrees. So it's not a safe alternative. Now we're dealing with another problem. Vaping alcohol. What a lot of the kids do, which I don't show in the presentation for the kids, they take a two-liter bottle of soda, they put dry ice on the bottom and they pour alcohol on it. But what's better than that, you don't even have to use alcohol, they can get online and order synthetic powdered alcohol. Put that into the bottle with some water, put the cap on it, they drill a hole through the cap, they take their bicycle pump or football pump, pump some air into the bottle, put it up to their mouth, take the cap off, crush the bottle and breathe it in. That's the equivalent of 12 to 15 shots of alcohol in one breath. What happens when first responders go to the scene with somebody that's overdosed on alcohol? They think it's opiate, they think it's heroin. They give them Narcan, doesn't work. There's no odor, you can't tell that it was alcohol. So we're doing a lot of education now through our presentations, but I've been going to all the hospitals and emergency rooms, just making them aware of a possible alcohol overdose, where it's not an opiate. Here we're talking about it being a brain disease and looking more at gene therapy and kids that feel like they don't fit in. They don't look any different, they can't tell that there's any difference, but they just don't feel deep joy inside when they're young. But now all of a sudden, they turn 13 and they try alcohol or marijuana for the first time. Well, if you look here, if you start using alcohol or marijuana at age 13, there's a 47% chance of a mental illness or substance abuse issue when you're an adult. But as the brain develops, remember, brains fully develop to 25, as that goes down, if you waited, and it's not telling somebody, no, you can never drink or never drug, but just let them see how it goes down every year to where if you waited to age 21 before you started drinking alcohol or marijuana, there's only a 9% chance of having a mental health issue or a substance abuse issue as an adult. So just, we've got to get kids older, as old as we can get them, before they're going to start dabbing into substances, just so that there's no future problems. Cocaine, you heard about cocaine deaths? Cocaine doesn't normally kill you, as a medical examiner will tell you, but they are listed as cocaine deaths because that's the largest substance that's in the body. But cocaine production has more than doubled coming in this year. It's paid for in advance, they make $50 million orders and there's no risk to their investment. They're promised that if they pay in advance $50 million, if their shipment gets intercepted, they will get the next shipment sent out. And all routes are open. So cocaine, they stopped spraying the poppy fields in Columbia in the rainforest, so that's why production has doubled coming in. But what they're doing is they're lacing the fentanyl into the cocaine, which used to be called a speedball. So you've got people dying on the fentanyl, not the cocaine, but it's still listed as a cocaine death because that's the largest substance in the system. Now we've got the heroin. We knew that once we got ahead of the Flaca and problem, another drug was going to come to take its place. We had gotten some intel about a fentanyl and the only thing we knew about at that time was medical-grade patch fentanyl. And we'd also heard about a new synthetic LSD that was so powerful that you'd have flashbacks the rest of your life. We haven't really seen too much of that. You know, we heard about the crocodile that was going to come, from Russia, we really haven't seen any of that, we've seen lower grades of it. Heroin has been around, morphine's been around for 3,000 years. So this one isn't going anywhere. This is here to stay. We did a great job, as Jim said, on getting rid of the pill mills. You know, we had the largest amount of pill mills in the country, right here. But what happens when there's no more pills and you start feeling dope sick? Like Jim explained about all the symptoms of being dope sick, you want to die. When you're dope sick, you don't want to live. So it's pretty easy to understand that a little $10 bag of heroin is going to make you feel well, that you can function. Brain of an addict doesn't think about going into detox and getting help and going into treatment. It's instant gratification. I want it when I want it, I want it now, I want to feel better, I got to go out and do something. $10 bag of heroin, which was a whole lot cheaper than the pills too. Who abuses prescription drugs? Everybody can. Most of your abuse from prescription drugs started with medicine cabinets. Kids getting into the parents' medicine cabinets, grandparents' medicine cabinets, then we had the pill mills. But right now, it's mostly being over prescribed by doctors, big pharma. Purdue Pharma got oxycodone approved in 1996 and the one thing that they had to prove was that less than 1% of the population would become addicted if they took that drug. They also had to prove that it lasted at least 12 hours. They lied. It only lasts six to eight hours, you need to take another pill, you build up a tolerance, you need more pills, you run out of pills, you feel dope sick, hence $10 bag of heroin. What makes things worse right now is the Food and Drug Administration in 2000, the end of 2015, has approved oxycodone for 11- to 16-year-olds. These kids are playing high school sports, they're looking to get a college scholarship, they got to play through the pain, they're never going to make college. They're going to start taking these drugs because of the pain, they're going to become addicted and either life is going to go downhill or they're going to die, one or the other. The United States is only 5% of the whole world population. 5%. But we use 99% of all the hydrocodone consumed. We use 85% of all the oxycodone consumed. And 80% of all new heroin abusers started with opiate, with pills. In the southern region, which is Miami-Dade, Broward, Palm Beach, Front Row, these five counties, we had 4,380 overdoses, including 1,460 deaths in 2015. At average, an overdose every two hours or 12 a day, including an opioid death every six hours or four a day. As Jim said, we have the perfect storm. We've got the cheap Mexican heroin and as a medical examiner would say, you know, years ago, you were either an addict or you're an alcoholic. You went to AA or you went to NA. Well, now everybody is a poly substance abuser. And as Dr. Malik will tell you, what they find in the substance now is all these poly substance use, Xanax, cocaine, marijuana, alcohol. Everybody's, doesn't care what they take, they'll take anything, they're like garbage cans. And that's another reason why the people that take a more variety of the substances die of an overdose faster because of all these extra substances they have in their system. And the counterfeit pills, as Jim said, we need the emergency kit, here's what you feel like when you feel dope sick, like Jim showed you before, and you look at those symptoms. If you feel all those symptoms, you want to die. So now it's pretty easy to understand that a little $10 bag of heroin is going to make you feel well again, why they go for it. Here's some of the heroin that's coming in, the low-grade heroin. Some of the analogues that are in Broward County now. We had the whole series, W Series, W1 to W32, W18 is the strongest out of the W Series. The U47700 that Jim mentioned before, that's the one they call pink. On the street, they think it's called pink because it's strong, that's not why it was called pink. They started snorting it off their pinky and then when you mix it up, it turns pink. That's how it got the name pink. And then car fentanyl. You've all heard of car fent- And then carfentanil, you've all heard of carfentanil, that's the elephant tranquilizer, that's the strong one, that's 10,000 times stronger than morphine. But what's more scary about carfentanil than anything else, it can be absorbed through the skin. Couple little flakes, that's why law enforcement and deputies are carrying Narcan now, because it's to protect themselves, to protect their canines. We had one instance in a house in Lauderdale Lakes, two people died of an overdose, they swept the house, didn't find anything, it was a sober living house. The house had been looked at for some money laundering. So they came back in, they brought three dogs, two money dogs, one drug dog, went through the house, didn't find anything, came back to the living room, all three dogs put their paws on the coffee table, all three dogs overdosed. It was absorbed through the pads of their feet. Luckily, first responders came with Narcan, the Narcan worked on the dogs, all three dogs revived, they're back on the job today. Other states right now, and other counties in Florida, in fact, I was up by Ocala a couple of weeks ago, listening to the nightly news, and they're talking about that incident that happened down here in Broward County, and that's why all their deputies are carrying Narcan now. It's all because of what happened here in Broward County. Now, the medical examiner will tell you, soon, we'll be up to 25 different analogs, and there's a possibility of going over 200 analogs. Just a demonstration about how much bigger carfentanil is, you see the little pill morphine, and then carfentanil. Another one that we have to look out for is grade death, which is a mixture of the different fetinals, some are Narcan-resistant, and you take a pill which looks like a Percocet, it's enough to kill you. There's the size of a, just to show you an illustration, that's a lethal dose of carfentanil compared to a penny. Again, lethal dose of heroin, fentanyl, and carfentanil. The pills that Jim showed you, oxycodone, Xanax, people that struggled with substance abuse, opiates, opioid overprescribed by oxys or Vicodin, naloxone to save your life, how it works by opening up the receptors so you can start breathing again. Good Samaritan Act just came into effect a year ago in January, just states that you have two addicts out there, one overdoses, the other addict can stay with his buddy, give him compressions, call 911. When the first responders come and the police come and he has drugs on him, he will not be arrested because he stayed there to save his buddy's life and just didn't let him die alone, usually in the back of a dumpster. Here's the brain of an addict, talking about brain disease, this brain has been in recovery for about a year. He's showing a nice, quiet nature video, the amygdala is not lit up at all, it's nice and calm. He's showing a cocaine video, something, someone sorting cocaine, the amygdala automatically lights up. This just shows you that the old tapes never go away. Once you get into recovery, you have to stay in recovery and keep reinforcing the new tapes, the new behavior, because that old behavior is always there. Why is it so cheap? Hundreds of people on the bottom, hundreds of acres of fields, planting the crop, harvesting the crop on top, one lab, one person, one day, making all those drugs. And I forgot my job already. With that, I would like to introduce Dr. Kunsman from the medical examiner's office, the chief toxicologist.
Unfortunately, I don't have any good slides, I actually don't have any slides. I use as the excuse that I was busy in my labs being inspected tomorrow, so I apologize for that, but what I'd like... That's a really bad echo, isn't it? Oh, you don't hear, oh, all right. Well, you're fortunate, you only have to hear me once, I have to hear me twice. And believe me, well, never mind. What I'd like to do is just give you a brief picture of the kinds of cases that we're seeing at the Broward County Medical Examiner, and the progression that we've seen over the last year or two in the number of different drugs that we have to try and identify to assist the medical examiner to determine cause of death. And the toxicology lab, which I'm privileged to run in Dr. Malik's office, our mission is to analyze postmortem specimens for the presence of drugs and poisons to assist the medical examiner to determine cause of death. And the typical scenario that we have is that we'll have a history of a decedent who has no anatomical or pathological cause of death, so they weren't shot, stabbed, run over, and no significant medical history of any kind of disease. And they'll have various symptoms like heavy lungs and congested organs, and oftentimes they're found at, or found at the scene of the death are baggies of white powder, syringes, pipes, crack pipes, and other kinds of paraphernalia. So we proceed to do a fairly routine analysis for most of our cases, and we hit occasional periods of time where we'll have such cases that, to all outward appearances, are drug overdoses. And the toxicology results are, well, I think they're thorough, but they're less than satisfactory in assisting the medical examiner to know what happened to this individual, which is even more unsatisfactory to family members, loved ones, friends, and everybody in the public health community. What we've discovered over time is the, what are now casually referred to as the fentologues, and because fentanyl analogs is getting just too tiresome to say, and because there are so many of them. And what I did was, I've gone back, and we started to see our first fentanyl analogs, acetyl-fentanyl and beta-hydroxythylofentanyl, in about May or June of 2015, and we had about six cases, and then things kind of went back to normal, we were just seeing the trailing off of alpha-PVP, and an occasional other cathinone like dibutalone, or methalone, or ethylene, or propylene, or almost any other loan you can think of. But then, we started to hit another period, and this seems to be my lot in life, I left Oakland County, Michigan, a few years after we had the combined heroin/fentanyl deaths in 2006 and 2007. And then, things started to get boring, so I decided to come to South Florida, and somebody told me a few days ago, there's actually a beach here, but I haven't had a chance in the four years that I've lived here to get there, because I came, alpha-PVP came, and now the fentologues. So in 2016, wait, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong slide, I have slides, but you don't, I'm sorry. In 2016, we identified fentanyl, and we do not know, unfortunately, whether that's medical-grade fentanyl. In other words, if a person has sucked a patch, chewed a patch, licked a patch, torn a patch, and injected it, I've even had a case, not here, but in another jurisdiction I worked in, where somebody actually smoked a fentanyl patch. We assume the fentanyl is what killed them, but the carcinogens in burning plastic are probably not good for you. But we've had 82 fentanyl cases in 2016. The acetyl-fentanyl, the last case that we saw was in the end of January of 2016, and so we haven't seen any more of that. Then, we started to see in March of 2016, another fentanyl analog, which has remained very, very popular, it's 4ANPP, or despropyrinylfentanyl. One of the problems that we have with these fentanyl analogs is they've never been submitted to clinical or human clinical trials, most of them have never been submitted to animal clinical trials. And so, we have a series of drugs which are related to fentanyl, and we believe, oh, I just wondered, everybody seems to be looking at the screen, I thought there was something interesting. Thought maybe it was that, the only slide I sent was the Muppet Scientist, who's, anyway, that's the story of my life. We do not have any idea of what the level of toxicity of these drugs is. And so, we've encountered cases in which, say, a year ago, we could not determine how much of the drug was present, whereas now, we're finding, for example, in despropyrinylfentanyl cases, we're finding levels of 10, 14, even 20 nanograms per milliliter of this drug. Now, as a standard of comparison, therapeutic fentanyl given for chronic pain is generally found in the blood at between 1 to 3 nanograms per milliliter. But we don't know whether or not 20 nanograms per ml of despropyrinylfentanyl is worse for you than, say, 10 nanograms per ml of fentanyl. However, when we have cases in which we have, as I described, all the appearance of a drug overdose, no other adequate cause of death, we've classified these drugs in that same category as cocaine, where, when people say, "Well, how much is okay to have and how much will kill you?" And the standard response is, "There's no amount that's good for you." And so, the presence of any amount of these drugs is sufficient to be a cause of death. So then, we moved in July of 2016, and we started to identify carfentanil in our cases, and so far, we've had 61 positive carfentanil cases. And I should say that we have, we have an analytical or an instrumentation problem in identifying these kinds of compounds, and I guess the best way to describe it is that although we can report cases that have these drugs present, we don't know the extent that there are cases in which these drugs are present, but they're so low in concentration that we can't detect their presence. And since we don't know anything about their real pharmacology, exactly how they act, we assume they act in the same way as fentanyl, but we know from a lot of other drugs that when additional molecules or additional groups are added to a molecule, the entire pharmacology of the drug can change. So we've been forced to make a number of assumptions because of, one, the potency of these drugs, and, two, the frequency at which, as soon as we identify one, we develop the ability to quantify it, to absolutely identify it, we have to purchase an analytical reference standard, which those are oftentimes very expensive. We've gone through the process of obtaining a DEA registration so that we can purchase controlled substances in our lab. All of these things add additional time and money to the process that we're going through. And so, until we actually can identify them, we don't know what we're missing. And so, those cases in which the toxicology is essentially negative, then we believe that, given the ability and given a break in the onslaught of cases, we'll have time to go back and fully evaluate just how long it is we've been seeing these various analogs. But the other problem is that we no sooner get a method, and we get our calibrators and our controls, and we get everything in line, and we start saying, "Yes, we can quantify it and produce these things, produce results for them," then they disappear. I get a bunch of other cases that I sit for a few hours and look at gas chromatography, mass spectrometry data, and try to figure out what is there. And so, the fact that it's so easy to change these molecules has made this a very, very complex problem for us, and since we're at, well, I hate to say we're at the tail end of public health, but since I just did, I guess we are. We get those cases in which we might have a history, but we might not. Or we'll get information that a person went to purchase heroin because it was their normal drug of choice, yet we do the toxicology, and there is no heroin. Or we find evidence of heroin use in a urine specimen, but there is no morphine or the unique heroin metabolite mono-acetyl-morphine in the blood. But with some luck, I guess, and a lot of, a lot of looking and piecing together what I've learned from my good chemistry background from Virginia Tech, so if you have kids, send them to tech, it's a good school. That was my recruiting, I don't care about football, it's a good chemistry program. And you learn to say things like fluorofentanil, despropyrinylfluorofentanil, furinylfentanyl, fluorobutyrinylfentanyl, U47700, which is not a fentanyl analog, but it's a synthetic opioid, isobutyrinylfentanyl, fluoroiisobutyrinylfentanyl, and those are just, that's most of the fentanyl analogs we've detected in 2016. Then, 2017 is pretty much more of the same, except, if you recall in the news a few months ago, in Atlanta, there was a series of deaths, and I apologize, can't remember the number, but people had consumed this yellow tablet, and a number of people died over a weekend. And it took a while to figure out exactly what was there, but it turned out they contained U47700 and cyclopropofentanil. And so, once I found that out, we called up GBI... And so once I found that out, we called up GBI and said, "Can we have your data?" One of my staff used to work at GBI, so I had her call. And while she's asking me, "Well, why do you think we should be looking for cyclopropofentanil?" She said, "Oh, I'm reviewing data, and I have this peak on my mass spectrum," which is how we identify these drugs, and she said, "I don't know what it is." And we looked at the ions, the peaks that come out, the little identifiers that tell us what the fragments of a molecule are. This is your chemistry lesson. When you put all those fragments together, they make the whole molecule. So those pictures you saw before of chemical structures, pieces of them break off, and then when you put them all back together, you get whatever drug it happens to be. And as we were talking, it turned out it was cyclopropofentanil. So no sooner heard than found. So we are now currently screening routinely in all of our cases for about 17 or 18 fentanyl analogs. And the positive rate, as you know, is fairly high. And I don't know how, how am I on time? Am I, have I interrupted one check? Okay. Nobody's falling over from ketoacidosis, I hope. So let me just give you an example of... Wait, I'm sorry, I have to, I'm having an iPad problem. It's, it's a personal issue, but I think I can work through it. Yes, yes, there it is. Don't you love technology? I run an extremely high-tech laboratory, and I can't even transfer a phone call from one person to another. I decided that it might be interesting to just pick out a few of, a few cases. I grabbed some, some data from the last two weeks of, I'm sorry, the first two weeks of July. And I'll just kind of read through briefly so you get an idea of the sorts of things that we're seeing now. And just as a preface to that, when I started as a postmortem toxicologist in my first job in Oklahoma in 1991, when we had a case of an sudden unexpected death, and no, again, anatomical pathological cause of death, just the normal signs related to a chemical death or drug overdose. The person would be a male in their twenties or thirties, and then we'd pull out all the stops, look for all the normal or routine illicit drugs of abuse. If the person had similar conditions and was 50, then we just did the routine, but we didn't go to any extra lengths because 50-year-olds didn't die of illicit drug abuse or drug overdoses. And so here at the end of July is an individual who is positive for amphetamine, methamphetamine, an elevated level of alprazolam, which is Xanax, the cathinone n-ethylpentalone, U47700, and some incidental things like the antidepressant sertraline. There's an elevated level of zolpidem, which is Ambien, because when you take too much methamphetamine, you need help going to sleep. And, oh, yeah, he was 65 years old. Here's a 74-year-old male who died of a cocaine overdose. He was very unusual in that cocaine and cocaine metabolites were the only drugs found. And such cases are almost like negatives to me now because they're so easy to review and finalize. This is a 23-year-old female, positive, of course, for alprazolam, which about two years ago, I suggested to Dr. Malik that we no longer quantitate or report alprazolam because I thought it was a normal blood component. Needless to say, that, that didn't go over really well, so we still quantitative a lot. This individual also had alpha PVP, which we still see. We usually have an alpha PVP positive about every five or six weeks. Ethylpentalone, so two cathinones in combination, as well as methamphetamine. Gosh, there's so many, I can't even read them. Cocaine, the usual cocaine metabolites. Heroin in the form of morphine and monoacetyl-morphine in the blood. Well, some cannabinoids, meaning they smoked marijuana, so they might have been using the delivery system of smoking a joint and having alpha PVP or the n-ethylpentalone on top of that. Although some people do use smoking as the route of administration for some of the fentanyl analogs. And, and there were five or six other drugs there as well that were not all that significant. And, oh, that's not an interesting case, hardly any drugs in that one at all. Only four, 63-year-old with fentanyl, cocaine, cocaine metabolites, and morphine. A 68-year-old with a very high level of tramadol, which is the pain reliever ultram. We're starting to see a lot more of that drug. And cocaine, cocaethylene, which is a product of cocaine and alcohol, morphine, monoacetyl-morphine, of course, alprazolam. And so far, since I've been here in four years, the oldest heroin overdose that we've seen is an 81-year-old male. And the number of 50, 60, and 70-year-olds, and for every 50, 60, and 70-year-old, there's a 20, 21, or 22-year-old, who are all, have nothing else except this potpourri of drugs on board. One of the things that we've done, and it's kind of unusual for a postmortem lab, but because we're seeing so many unusual things and cases in which we're not able to elucidate what the significant drug present actually is, we've started to collect on certain cases paraphernalia and drugs found at the scene of an individual's death. And when we analyze those, we're finding that these little baggies of powder or the remnants of fluid in a syringe, washings off a spoon, contain the same types of combinations that we're seeing in the postmortem specimens. So oftentimes, when we detect cocaine, heroin, and a fentanyl analog in the same person, it doesn't appear to be that it's three dosings of these different drugs, but that they're getting all of them in, let's just say, in one shot. And so we think that part of the problem we're encountering is that people go, they buy drugs from, whether it's someone they know, someone they just happen to meet in passing, and they say, "I'd like some heroin," because that's what's very popular. And what they're getting is sometimes just carfentanil, sometimes cocaine and carfentanil, sometimes heroin, cocaine, and U47700, and some other fentanyl analog, or any combination of the above. And so as has been mentioned before, we're getting these, these acute exposures of people to a massive number of drugs. And we're, we're still trying to figure out exactly what the mechanism is, which drug is the worst drug, whether they act in combination, or if the fentanyl and fentanyl analogs can cause death so rapidly that the other drugs don't even have a chance to metabolize or distribute throughout the body and exert an effect. So what we're seeing is a very, very complex picture of drug abuse. And it's, it's challenging, it's interesting for those of us that have decided this is how we want to earn a living and contribute what we know to society and to public health. But it's, it's really, really frustrating. And frankly, I just wish it would go away and we'd go back to standard old people just taking heroin and cocaine and not necessarily in combination. It would make my life a lot easier, and it would make every family member's life a lot easier, too. And so we'll have a question and answer coming up during lunch, and I think we're just about at lunchtime. And I'm educated enough to know that you don't interfere with lunch. The only thing worse than that is if you're talking at the end of the day, interfering with the cocktail hour. So that's all I have. If anyone has questions, feel free to ask. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's give our speakers a hand. You're going to notice that on both sides of the auditorium, we have microphones, so we're going to go ahead and do some Q and A for the speakers. They all have microphones up at the table, and they will be able to answer your questions. We also will be serving lunch, so as you came in and checked in at the registration desk, you were given your lunch choice, so please make sure it's in front of you so the servers can just put your plate down. Thank you, yes. Senator Rader, he's been here. Thank you. So do we have questions?
Do you hear me okay? Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Enrique Perez Blanco. My background are law and sociology. I live in this wonderful city, thanks to Ortiz, my vice mayor Castillo, and the other I don't know at this time, nobody knows, but at the end of this day, there will be 9,000 person, young boy and girls that have started consuming drugs. We have nationwide 13,000 centers involved with this matter. We have a budget of 2,700,000 million in this matter, and there is no improvement. My question is, there is no right time to change the focus? There is not the time to analyze there are causes, social causes, in this matter? The burden, the most burden suffering are the police and the jails. Our Florida jails have 100,000 incarcerated, most of them for drugs, and they are, they are not criminal. My question, it is time to focus, to change the focus?
We can't understand what he's saying. There's too much feedback, we can't hear anything.
Yeah, we can't understand anything that's being said.
Okay, that's right here? That's right here? I don't know, I have to be closer? Okay, my question, plain, it is time to change the focus to, in this battle, not the medical, not another, instead, social causes?
I guess the question was, change the focus from what we're doing now to something different. Anybody? Anybody want to address that?
Improvement.
No improvement.
Improvement. There is, every day, we are worse in this battle.
He's saying there's, every day, there's no improvement, we're worse in the battle. Anybody want to address it?
That was just better.
Sorry?
It just came through for a second, we heard it, and then right off.
Okay, I guess he said the focus now, we have to address it now, more so, so I guess you just want to briefly address that?
Address the issue of opiates, or just drugs in general, or?
Yeah, he's saying the focus now has been what we were talking about, we need to change the focus and go on to different and other things. You want to address that?
It's good afternoon, I'm Dr. Foy. Basically, medication-assisted treatment is a modality that can be utilized in terms of helping patient, changing their focus, and incorporating behavioral health therapy. That should be one of the key focus we should utilize in this fight. Patients suffering from opiate substance disorder primarily have issues with their brain. And one of the things that we can do is provide medication that would have a great impact on restoring the brain to some normalcy, where those patients don't have craving for substance, they're able to focus on their behavioral health therapy, and they are able to take in, for example, their motivational interviewing techniques that will be utilized by their counselors. And not just that focus, but focusing on families and making sure that family has a buy-in and have a great understanding of recovery and what this fight is all about. So a big part of the focus is replenishing the brain so that person feels normal and they're not feeling sick, and they're able to concentrate more so on their therapies, and building their skills in terms of their recovery, learning what recovery is all about. So that's one of the focus that is available, and that's a medication-assisted treatment. With medication-assisted treatment, we will see patient doing a lot better because they're not craving for substance. not craving for substance, they're not going through withdrawal signs and symptoms, while they're able to focus on the message the counselor and the behavioral community is trying to impart to them. In addition, you're also building a strong community support. We need community involvement. It's very important to bring the community along. There's not enough dollars out there, we also need financial help to support the recovery effort. So I think the new direction should have a lot of focus on recovery, in terms of replacing that, what the patient is missing, so that they could feel better, and so that they can focus on what they need to focus on to attain their recovery.
Thank you, Dr. Foy. I'd like to add to that, that really the wave across the country right now is medically assisted treatment, but we also believe that that should be in conjunction with a treatment program. You know, we don't want to switch one addiction to another, we don't want to have it like the methadone clinics years ago. The medical, MAT program, medically assisted treatment should only be with a, in conjunction with a treatment program, and we're looking at more short term. The problem with opiates right now is, it destroys the white matter of the brain, and actually gets into the bones and gets into the spinal column. So when you're thinking about all the treatment modalities, someone on an opiate isn't really thinking clearly for about 120 days, or when they can start thinking clearly. So we're looking at a lot longer treatment, you know, 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, isn't going to hack it with opiates.
My name is Jody Schroeder, I'm a physician assistant with Bark, I work at detox. My question specifically is for Dr. Kuntzman. If you're having a hard time determining what substances patients are overdosing with, how are we better able to identify what substances they are needing to be detoxed from? Specifically, what's the best modality for screening patients when they present to detox?
In detox programs, the patients, or the clients, I should say, are usually just given a very rapid and simple screening test, which is, they're good for the old classic drugs, if you're just taking heroin, or cocaine, or drinking alcohol, but most of the tests that are done, and this is also a problem in hospitals, especially in trauma, where they're trying to elucidate what a patient is on when they first come into the hospital to see if treatment has to be either altered, or certain precautions taken, fentanyl, and most places don't do a fentanyl analysis at all. And so, the simple cup or dipstick that's common in detox and drug rehab programs won't detect these drugs. And the fentanyl analogs absolutely will not be detected. Drugs like U-47700, and MT-45, W-18, the other synthetic opioids, those also are not detected. The reason that these systems are in place as they are, is that over time, we've been able to develop these types of tests, but the drugs that are coming along now are so new, and they change so rapidly, I just don't think that there is a good approach. And so, I would say that what every toxicologist and clinical chemist, or clinical toxicologist should always say to anybody in patient care, never wait, hold, or adjust patient care waiting for toxicology results. You unfortunately are in the position where you have to make decisions based on your immediate observations and your training as to what kinds of drugs will elucidate, or will result in the types of effects that you're seeing. And when you see a person who's obviously intoxicated, you test their urine and they're negative, then trust your observation, don't trust the test. The test is accurate to the degree that it can test, but it misses a lot of things. And there's not going to be anything in the near future that's going to help you solve your problem. I'm sorry.
Isn't it costs a million dollars each, on average, to help them after they are born? I think it said 2,500 babies? That's a hell, heck of a number. When I multiplied it out, remember my calculator, my phone couldn't do it, because the number was so big. If you could just expand on that just a little bit more. And I have kind of an interesting question about addiction as well. Can this happen to anybody? Meaning, can anybody become addicted to opioids? Can anyone be addicted to alcohol? Is it open to everyone? Or is it a certain type of person who gets addicted? And my third question, and I kind of thought it a little bit more when I was listening to Mr. Mainz, was, I don't see any statistics from universities. I mean, there's millions of kids on universities between 18 and 25. It seems that this addiction is really hitting that age range fairly strong. Are universities kind of hiding these statistics? Do they not publish them? There must be a lot of kids leaving universities due to these issues. If you remember those three questions, I'd be great if you could have a response. Thank you.
In regards to the neonatal abstinence syndrome, the cost I cited is not necessarily an average cost, but is a citing of at least, I can hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Closer? Okay. All right. The million dollar cost that I cited for neonatal abstinence syndrome is not an average cost necessarily, but is based on an analysis conducted by the Palm Beach Post of at least some selected cases. So it can vary dramatically. But nonetheless, it's a costly process, not just in terms of dollars, but also what's the impact on the life of this young infant, and what may be the chronic effects of that over the years. In terms of the question about can anyone become addicted? Yes. However, there are also issues that make some people more genetically predisposed to addiction, so I heard a leading physician addictionologist once say, if he only got to ask one question in doing a overall assessment of a client, it would be, do you have a parent, a grandparent, or an uncle who's had an alcohol or other drug dependency problem? So there are genetic issues there, but that certainly doesn't mean if you haven't had one of those, that you are safe from exposure. And certainly, the morphine molecule in particular is one of the most known addictive substances, so that it's very difficult to avoid addiction once a person has gotten into a level of non-medical use. And I missed the second question. Oh, in terms of colleges, there is one national survey conducted by Harvard, that is basically a college behavioral health survey, that you probably could Google that for, that one is a sort of national overview. There's also the National Survey on Drug Use and Health, which does break out by age groups of 12 to 17, and then 18 to 25. That's not necessarily if they are in school or not in school, but that is the key subpopulation group for the demographic. There are studies within the National Survey on Drug Use and Health that do compare students enrolled in college versus those who are not enrolled. So there are some comparisons analysis, but I'd refer you to the National Survey on Drug Use and Health from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration.
Yeah, I'd like to just add that the difference between alcohol and the opiates and the drugs that we're talking about, anyone can become addicted to opiates. Alcohol, you can drink alcoholically, you can abuse alcohol, but usually there's difference between alcoholism and alcohol abuse, and that's genetics. As far as universities and colleges, there's one study out that at the beginning of any new semester at any major university, there's usually one death on campus for alcohol poisoning, from power drinking, and that's usually from someone that's just gone to college, they really haven't abused drugs or alcohol, and they try power drinking, and then they wind up with alcohol poisoning, because they don't have a tolerance.
Okay, thank you. Senator Rader, I actually want to meet with you and ask you a question, and I can perhaps answer some for you. I was a neonatal nurse taking care of drug addicted babies, so I can tell you the amount of drugs the mother takes is definitely a factor. Some are in three, four, or five months, they're using all the disciplines, physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, of course, the farm Ds, the neonatologists. So the expense does vary, but there is a hospital on the west coast of Florida that reports every year, the amount of NAS babies increases by 1,200% every year. So we certainly need to do something about this. And I went to Tallahassee last session, and I did get a bill amended, House Bill 557, I don't remember the Senate version, to limit the amount of pills that a prescriber can prescribe, as they have done in other states. And Senator Clemmons from West Palm Beach on Easter weekend deleted that portion of the bill on the Senate side. It did pass the House side. And until we get fewer pills, we're never going to end the need for MAT, the need for Narcan, the need for more treatment beds. So I will ask you to sponsor a bill for us this session. And I'll call your office. Stop now, stop the organized pill pushers now, is the name of my organization. And I look forward to meeting with you.
All right, thank you. We'll have another Q and A later this afternoon. And at this time, I'd like you to please welcome Liz Fisher, an advocate, and help me welcome her to the platform. Liz?
Okay. Hi. Wasn't expecting to speak today, I thought the video was my testimony, but here I am. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the City of Pembroke Pines, and especially Commissioner Siple. When I had a frank conversation with her, maybe six to nine months ago, about what was happening in our family, she really jumped on board to say, hey, we need to do something. And so, thank you, Commissioner Siple, I really, really appreciate it. Just to give you a little, the short version of our family's story, like in the video, I said, you know, we have, my husband and I are very happily married, 33 years, both worked for Pembroke Pines, have lived here, our kids went through the charter school, did great, just a normal, typical family. And then, when our third son, Michael, started showing some signs that something wasn't right, is when we started figuring out what was really going on. And just to kind of go back a little bit, just to give a little history of Michael, he was a great kid. Never had a problem, went to school, did well, graduated, went on to school in Orlando, did well, came home, got a job, started working. And then, we started noticing a few things, he couldn't pay some bills, and it just, things just didn't make sense. So fast forward a couple of years, because it took us, because he was able to work and function and do what he was supposed to do, until he couldn't. And so, that, he ended up in his first treatment center in March of 2013. And to be real honest with you, because I didn't know anything, like, at this point, I didn't know, I didn't know, because I have no personal experience myself with addiction. And in my family, there had been a few cousins or a grandfather that had struggled with alcohol, but never to the point where they couldn't manage their lives, where their lives became so unmanageable that they stopped functioning. So I had no personal experience. So when you don't know, you don't know, you don't even know where to start, if that makes sense. I say that all the time to people. And he went to his first treatment center in March 2013, and I really was under the impression that, you know, he went to detox, he went to treatment, and I really thought it was like kind of sending him off to camp. You're going to go for 28 days, you're going to do what you have to do, you're going to come out, and we're going to be okay. Well, I wish that was true, but that was just the beginning of our journey. And fast forward, many detoxes, many treatment centers, it continued on. And so, over this course of four years, I've decided that I need to get help for our family, because addiction, just like many of the people up here, is a family disease. And even though we were a healthy family, and we had all the normal stuff that normal families go through, when addiction enters into your family, if you have no experience with it, you yourself can get as ill as your loved one. So I'm very fortunate, I got to a self-help group, a support group, early on, and made some great friends. And what I do want to share with you is that this, it's a support group, every Monday night, locally, and I helped facilitate it. And I want to tell you, in any given week, we have at least 30 families there, at least. And this is different people coming, you know, we encourage everyone to keep coming back, but a lot of times, the stigma and the shame that surrounds addiction keeps people from getting help. So just so you know, it's alive and well in our community, it's happening, and it's happening to families just like ours. And, you know, some of my friends asked me, why do you do this, Liz? And I say, because it can happen to any family, and it has no distinction on socioeconomic, education, race, gender. But the only way to break the stigma is for people like myself, who actually are living it, to get out there and not be afraid to talk about it. So that's part of why I'm here, to put a face to it in our community. And another thing is, I have to say, I wholeheartedly agree with everything the panel is saying, in particular, about the medication assisted treatment, for those of us struggling with opioid addiction. But one of the things I want to try and leave everyone here with, and maybe even the panel can discuss this a little bit later, is the fact that if we are going to address addiction as a disease, which it is, it's a mental health disease, and if some of our loved ones need some medication assisted therapy, that part of the recovery continuum, so to speak, has to be providing them with safe, affordable housing, where this type of medication is allowed. Because part of the struggle that a lot of people don't realize, maybe even perhaps even in the addiction professionals, is that when our loved ones are needing any type of medication, whether it be medication assisted therapy, whether it be antidepressant, whether it be for bipolar, you know, whatever the issue may be, because addiction is a mental health disease, is that many times, when they go to a typical 28-day street treatment center, in order to go to a sober living, supported housing where they can continue on their sobriety, they have to get off many of these medications. So they have to get off these medications, which just sounds crazy, to go live in the housing that's supposed to be supporting the recovery. So there's a lot of, lot of things to be worked out, because we would never tell a diabetic, whoop, hurry up, get off your insulin, you know, you know, hurry up and do that. So that's one of the questions I'm posing to the panel, to maybe talk about later, and think about moving forward. But really, I'm just participating in all this as an advocate, and as a mother, and, you know, even though we've had a lot of struggles with our son's addiction, I can honestly say, he doesn't get any trouble, he's a good guy, he keeps trying. And the one thing I would like, if there's any, I know there's probably a lot of law enforcement, so thank you, I know you, the police officers and first responders, paramedics have a big job out there, is that when we see our loved ones in active addiction, that's a different version of themselves, it's not really who they are. And so, try and separate that version from the version that you know, and that every person you see struggling, just like one of the gentlemen up here. And that every person you see struggling, just like one of the gentlemen up here said was that, they don't really want to live that way. No one wants to wake up every day feeling bad, and feeling sick, and now just having to go use just to feel normal, not to even get high, but just so they're not getting sick. So, I hope you all keep that in mind. I do what I do because I want to erase the stigma in our community and in our county. Thanks.
I was supposed to introduce, have Dr. Malik come up? Sorry. And also, I just want to say, on a positive note of my little dreary, my son right now currently is doing well, he's like five months into recovery and doing well, so.
Hi, I'm Craig Malik. I guess, they've been talking about the medical examiner all morning, and I'm him. I've been here five years now, it's been a great five years, and thank you, Mayor, for inviting me to be part of this, I appreciate it. I really enjoy being down here, it's a beautiful facility, I've never seen anything like this with these chairs and stuff, so this is really cool. So, I think Pembroke Pines did a heck of a job building this place. So, some of you know that before I came to Broward County, I was the Armed Forces Medical Examiner for a decade, which made, meant I was the federal medical examiner for 10 years too, through two wars, drugs, all kinds of things. And so, I've got a few things to talk about, and I may refer back to some of that, so. There are no regular drugs anymore. The reports Dr. Koontzman puts out, he used to get like, you know, A, B, and C, now it's A through double Z on these reports. We talk about government waste and lazy government workers, I can guarantee you, you're getting great service out of our office, where if you come by at 3:00 AM, you'll find Dr. Koontzman sitting at his desk seven days a week, trying to figure out what this next drug is coming. And we also do all the DUI cases, and we're seeing these in the DUI cases too, so keep that in mind, that it's not just alcohol and other drugs out there, it's all these bizarre drugs that we've been talking about all morning. I don't do a lot of slides usually, because they make me talk at lunch, and I'm a forensic pathologist, and the slides that I would put up, most people don't want to see during lunch. So, I don't have any slides either. And besides that, Jim Hall takes all my data, and he makes all these beautiful slides, and then I don't have to do it, and his looks better than mine anyways. So, as far as the demographics go, this year, we've had 321 overdoses, as of the middle of July, we still have some cases that are pending, just a few, but that's not the halfway point. Last year, the first half of 16, we had under 200 overdoses, and in the second half 16, we had 400 overdoses, and so that's how we got up to 600. I was talking to Dr. Bell yesterday in Palm Beach, they're running at 800 this year, they had 600 last year, we're running at about 700 this year, and we had 600 last year, so the numbers are going up. We've only had six people, or six people die who are under the age of 21. So, I'm really glad to hear the school system's getting ahead of this, because it's not a big lethal problem in the school system yet, and to keep it out of our school systems is a, is the way to do it, is before it happens, stop it. Of all the accidents that cause death in Broward County, 65% now are overdoses. So, that includes falls, car crashes, anything else you can think is accidental, getting killed on the job. So, 65% now are drug overdoses. We went from 200 overdoses in 14 to the 600 we had last year, and we're going to beat that record this year also. So, it's going up. We've had people doing heroin for 40 years, and we get their families calling and saying, dad knows what he's doing, he's been doing heroin forever. Well, not with these new drugs out there on the street. So, it's pretty amazing to see a 75-year-old come in, and you're pretty sure it's heart disease, and it turns out to be drugs. As far as the suicides, we've had 17 suicidal overdoses, those are the ones where we see the pills. They usually don't overdose on the street drugs, those are the ones where they calculate it out, and they figure out how many pills to take, and they get their prescriptions and take all the pills they can, and those are the ones that ends up being the suicides. As far as disposal of these drugs, let's get it, you know, getting them out of the house before the 15, 16-year-old grabs them out of mom's medicine cabinet. A lot of people are worried about flushing them down the toilet, that it's going to get in the water system. Well, part of my military career, we worked with the DEA, FDA, and other people, and we went all over the country, and we took water out of sewage systems, and there's tons of drugs being dumped into the sewage system naturally. You could dump every pill and every medicine cabinet in this county down the toilet, and it wouldn't make a bit of difference in the water around here. And I know a lot of people don't like to hear that, so there is an alternative out there now, which, they sell these bags, and you throw the pills in the bags, and it dissolves it, and it has activated charcoal, and it activates the drug, and you can throw it away. So, that's an alternative, if you worry about the environmental effects of narcotics. But even the FDA says you can throw narcotics down the toilet. Other drugs, they don't want you to, but they list all narcotics as that that's okay, but there are other alternatives, they're getting rid of them, but we got to get them out of the medicine cabinets, so these kids don't start taking them right away. As far as the families go, we have lots and lots of families that I talk to all the time. We have families that just show up and want to talk, you know, no appointment, they just show up, and of course, we stop whatever we're doing and go and talk to them. That, it really brings it home to what is pretty clinical, stark reality in our world to a, really hits home when we talk to these families. And so, it's a, it's a good thing for us to connect with them. My other BSO colleague over here, who, we did another town hall together, and he brought me a question, says, what do you do if you're, if you find out your child is using these horrific drugs? And he's repeated it a couple of times, and unfortunately, your child is going to be really sick, or they're going to die, and you really need to give them that hug and tell them that you love them, because you don't know if you're ever going to see them again if they're on this stuff. In and out of these rehab centers, everybody we see has been in a rehab center just about, and the rehab centers turn back on the street, and they end up dead. The latest and greatest is this medically assisted therapy, there's a drug called Suboxone, which has Narcan in it, and it's got Buprenorphine, which is the narcotic in it, that they don't get the cravings. There's a problem with this drug, is that there are recipes all over the internet on how to take the Narcan out of the Suboxone, and then use it as a drug, and it's 50 times stronger than morphine. So, you need the social, family, all the other support things that go with it. They have a drug that blocks the receptors for up to a month, and then, if they don't get that continuing support, they go back and use their regular dose, they're going to die. And we see that, those are the ones we find with the syringes still in their arm. So, it's a, the drug is not the answer, it's got to be in combination with everything else. We have deaths, we had a death over the weekend from Bark, and I talked to some of the staff, and they said this is just somebody, they just couldn't get them off the drugs. So, we're not going to win on all of them, but we can save a lot of them, it'd be a lot better. They talk about Carfentanil, and I've told this story before, and I wasn't allowed to talk about it, but Carfentanil, you saw how little it takes to kill you, like two grains of salt. Carfentanil came into my life when I was in the military, because about 15 years ago, the Chechen rebels took over a theater in Moscow, and then all of a sudden, it was over. The Russians had aerosolized Carfentanil and put it in the HVAC system, and it killed 80% of the people in the theater. And we were able to detect it at the time, but we didn't realize it was a weapon, and that was classified for years and years and years, and now I can talk about it, because it's on the street all over the place. And so, instead of trying to sneak 1,000 kilos of heroin in, you sneak in one kilo of Carfentanil. Fortunately, we're not seeing as much Carfentanil as we did a year ago, it's starting to go away, because even the drug dealers are scared of it, but we have it right there in the lab. Caught Dr. Koontzman by himself one morning, analyzing some of the stuff we found on one of the decedents, and it turned out to be Carfentanil. So, this is really, really dangerous stuff, so you want to stay away from it. They talked about gray death in Georgia, it was just a combination of some of these crazy drugs that was put out on the street, and it popped up, and then it went away. I had a chance to talk to, does everybody here know who Joe Theismann is? Remember who Joe Theismann is? His daughter overdosed here in the county, and I had to call him, because the press all wanted copies of the, our reports, and by state law, we had to release them. And the conversation started off with him, really, really ticked off at me. I'm glad we were on the phone and not in person, because he's a lot bigger than me. We talked for about an hour, and we talked about his daughter, who was 42-years-old, and how he'd been fighting this addiction with her for 25 years, and how she manipulated the heck out of him, she'd go to rehab, promise this was it, get back in good graces, and next thing you know, she's back in rehab again. And this just kept going on and on and on, until she got one of these really strong drugs down here and died. But it was really heart-wrenching to hear somebody like him, who has all the resources in the world, and he couldn't get his daughter off of these drugs. We hear about the movie stars and the, all the famous people dying. In the LA morgue, they have six lockups in their body cooler, where they put the stars, so that nobody can get in there and take pictures of them when they overdose. It's a pretty sobering reminder, it looks like a jail cell that they lock them into, just to keep them out of the public light. The Michael Jacksons, the Princes, all these, all these cases, and it's something that, it affects everybody. As far as the college students, I think most of them, once they get involved in this stuff, they, we hear that they were in college, and now they're not in college, and that's when they die. So, I think that they get involved with it, they usually don't die in college, but it affects them to the point where they end up out of college, and then they're back here. The halfway houses, we've come to just talk about them as being halfway to our office, they're just drug dens, and there's so many drugs in these halfway houses, and everybody in the room will be stoned, and then one guy won't wake up in the morning, and they let him sleep all day, well, he isn't sleeping, he's dead. And it's the way it just goes. The Flaca was an African-American problem, we had 60 deaths, we had 10 times that last year of these opioids. You hear a lot about the Flaca, you don't hear much about these, because you just die, you don't go out in the street and do crazy things. With 90% of our overdoses and deaths are in the white or Hispanic population, and 65% of them are male. It's a different demographic, it's, I don't know what's coming next, I don't know what will happen next, but with the new drugs coming on the scene, we don't, we just keep chasing them, and we'll keep working at it. These, these things usually run in cycles of 18 to 24 months, is what I've learned over the years, and this one's run its 24 months, but it keeps on going. So, this could be the one that doesn't stop, it just keeps changing a little bit at a time, and we keep seeing new drugs coming up. We actually found the U47700, we were, us in Pinellas County were the ones that found it first in the state, and we were able to call the AG's office, and they put it on the, the scheduled list of drugs that were illegal here. And we do that on a regular basis, as we find the new ones. The cyclofentanyl is, was on our listserv yesterday, because people are seeing it all over the country, and the medical examiners were asking, have you seen this, have you seen this? And they're popping up. Fortunately, we've got a lot of support systems, we're talking to a lot of people, we're hoping this is going to make a difference. We've got places like Bark that are doing everything right, and we just, we wish we could get the relapse rate down from 80 to 90%, because no matter what we do, the relapse rate is still staying that high. With more community involvement and better treatment programs, I'd love to see that relapse rate go down and kind of put us out of business. I've got a group of tired docs who work continually on these cases, this morning came in, you know, another four or five overdoses, and I know that they'd like to be put out of this, this part of the business altogether, and we'll continue to work, and we're the canary in the coal mine, and we'll keep letting people know about the new things that are popping up. And in collaboration with our county partners and our BSO partners, and everybody else that we work with in the medical societies, I think we've got a pretty bright future ahead of us in getting a handle on this. And later, I'll be glad to take any questions anybody has, so thank you very much. Okay. I'm supposed to introduce Dr. Foy, who's our medical director of Bark, and he'll give us perspective on the new treatment protocols and what they're up to.
Good evening, everyone, again. Good afternoon, everyone. Today, I'm going to be speaking to you about a medication-assisted treatment program, and shot, it's called MAT, Medication-Assisted Treatment, gosh, MAT Treatment of Opioid Substance Disorder, that combines behavioral therapy, counseling, support, support services, and medication approved by the US Food Drug Administration. When we talk about medication approved by the US Drug Administration, we're looking at medication like Buprenorphine. Buprenorphine is a partial mu-opioid agonist, available for more than 10 years. And with this medication is used to treat substance use disorder caused by opiate. Buprenorphine normally binds to a mu-opioid receptor in the brain. There's all receptors in the brain, we have a mu-opioid receptor, and we have a kappa receptor. But Buprenorphine is a partial mu-opioid receptor agonist. It binds to the mu-opioid receptor, and this will stimulate a feeling of analgesia, meaning pain relief, and it will stimulate also a feeling of euphoria. That's why most people addicted to opiates utilize Buprenorphine and other opiates. We also have directed, directly acting opiates, such as methadone. Methadone being around more than 40 years to help people reduce or quit their opiate use. However, Buprenorphine is much safer than methadone, which is a direct agonist. Buprenorphine is a partial mu-opioid receptor agonist, it gets to a certain point where, in terms of its dose, and then, basically, it's, it reaches ceiling effect. So, based on the ceiling effect and the bioavailability of Buprenorphine, it's a much safer drug to use. Buprenorphine also has an attachment to it, sometime we would attach naloxone. Sometime, we would attach naloxone to buprenorphine. When naloxone attaches to buprenorphine, it's supposed to make it a lot safer. In other words, naloxone is a mu-opioid receptor blocker. So if you stimulate that receptor, primarily, you will put somebody into withdrawal. Okay. So next drug that we use, we use naltrexone, also can be utilized as a medication. Naltrexone is an opiate receptor, naltrexone is an opiate agonist that blocks the euphoric and sedative effects of opioids and alcohol. It requires that patient undergo medically supervised withdrawal at least seven to 10 days before it should be utilized. And naloxone is a medication used to reverse opiate overdose. It blocks opiate receptor site, interrupting the toxic effects of the opiate. Administration, naloxone can be administered safely by first responders or trained bystanders to prevent death from opiate overdose. Narcan nasal spray can also be utilized. Evisio is an auto-injector authorized by the FDA. All of these medications can be utilized in terms of treatment by first responders Medication supervised withdrawal in and of itself does not constitute substance use disorder. Evaluation stabilization done within the assistance of medication. When we look at, when we look at the treatment and rehabilitation of an ongoing continual assessment, continual assessment of treatment, some of the key issues with medication maintenance and treatment should follows. Treatment process continues. Maintenance include the continuation of counseling, social support, and medications specified in the treatment plan. Refining and strengthening of strategies to avoid overlaps, and engagement in ongoing recovery support such as aftercare and domiciliary care. Treatment delivery systems. Treatment delivery systems. OTP can exist in a number of settings such as intensive outpatient, residential, and hospital setting. However, they must be certified by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. And there's some key areas I'm going to touch on with respect to these entities. So OTP can exist in numerous environments. Patient leaving a residential treatment program, outpatient treatment program. Here are some of the key components as it relates to OTP. OTP should have, OTP use strong regulations in terms of monitoring and caring for their patients. With OTP, we utilize, with OTP, we utilize screening techniques to screen patients to ensure that we are choosing the proper patient. OTP can lend a fight in this war against opiate overdose. If you have the proper OTP, if you have the proper OTP, you will, if you have the proper OTP and following the proper regulations, you will be able to care for patient in a right, in a right manner. For example, with OTPs, with OTPs, primarily, there are several things that are done with With OTPs, basically, we are screening the patient, and we are trying to medicate the patient in an appropriate manner. We utilize buprenorphine. Buprenorphine is a mu-opioid receptor antagonist, and basically, it's a partial mu-opioid receptor antagonist. So buprenorphine will help to replace what the patient is missing in their brain. And so basically, the patient will be able to, these patients will be able to carry out their daily activities, their daily life, and function in a manner, in a manner towards their recovery. Several things has to be in place instrumentally. They should have a safe, they should have safe housing, they should have a community connection, they should be well-versed in their community. They need community support, there should be family buy-in, and if you have all of this in place, you can have a successfully treated patient. This is not just contingent on giving a patient a medication. This is what happened to us in the distant past. Patient will go to a physician's office, patient would receive medication, buprenorphine or Suboxone. There was no counseling, there's no behavioral, there's no behavioral added to it, nothing in terms of recovery. And that patient is left free to roam with all proper guidance underneath the MAT principles. If you understand the strict MAT principles, if you understand and follow the strict MAT principles, this is what occur with medication-assisted treatment. These individuals are provided strong counseling, support, they are linked with community groups, and they are coming in for treatment. Now, medication-assisted treatment is not for everyone, but for those who choose medication assistance, have an ability to do, to do well with the support. Also, families of these patients should be well-informed about the recovery process. They should be, they should be participating in recovery. And then, you know, support groups, they should attend support groups as well to ensure that they have an understanding of the addiction. So when we look at medication-assisted treatment, there are several components with medication-assisted treatment. You want to engage family, you want to engage loved one, you want to make this patient feel alive. You know, some patients stated that they were feeling so bad, they were afraid of relapsing, they were experiencing, they were experiencing pain. But once you start them on the recovery medication, at Broward Addiction and Recovery Health Center, we use subytext to treat these patients. On a firsthand experience, we see a big difference in these patients. They're highly motivated, they're coming in for treatment, and they're coming on a daily basis. They are so engaged and involved. Their pain has been taken away with the medication that is provided. So they have time to participate in group activities. What is the future of OTP? OTP can offer several different range of treatment. Basically, through OTPs, we can, through OTPs, we can basically, we can basically narrow the gaps of death that is occurring. These patients have a place to come to safely on a daily basis. They're receiving medication to take the pain away from their brain. They don't have to worry about, basically, they don't have to worry about going into withdrawal. And with OTP, we basically take them through a safe method in terms of detoxifying them. And these patients also needs to be assigned a recovery specialist, a peer that they, a peer specialist, someone who have experienced addiction in the past, someone who would guide them, someone who would go out into their homes and assist these patients. So there are several component to, to a MAT treatment program. I have included some information for you at the end of this presentation. I have included basically a brochure and a website where you can get information. So in summary, OTPs provide a vital function. It's out there in the community that people view OTP as one exchange, exchanging one addiction for another. But we're not exchanging an addiction for another. We are basically providing a medication that could be helpful to these patients while they pretty much recover safely. And this medication will provide these patients with the ability to work and to become engaged in activities that they haven't been doing. They will feel a lot better knowing that they feel they're receiving something to take their pain away. But it can't just be medication. It has to be an involvement from the community, their families, everyone involved. That commitment has to be there. Some of these patients have gone on to basically conduct a safe life, and some of them have returned to work. So we know that OTP works because evidence-based medicine has told us that with OTPs, patients who come off of their maintenance medication, they were able to stay cleaner a lot longer. Five years old studies have shown with OTPs that these people went into recovery almost for the rest of their life, and that's five years after receiving medication maintenance. So this is an option that we should look at and consider seriously that OTP has a role in this fight against opiate epidemic. Some people believe because they remember the horror stories of methadone. But most of those programs did not take into account the safety principles the way they should have. With OTPs, pretty much in MAT, MAT is an extension of an OTP program. OTP can basically provide medication-assisted treatment. When you speak to patient and you speak to their families, they are telling you they have seen a totally different person. They are receiving a medication that make them feel normal. They feel normal in their brain, so they are able to conduct activities that they haven't done in years. But the key solution is you must couple behavioral health along with medication assistance. And people remember methadone patient not enough, they remember people receiving Suboxone. So people have a negative view about MAT. But MAT is a program that is falling underneath the umbrella of OTPs, and OTPs are regulated by SAMSA, the government. It's regulated. So you have to have, you have to be licensed to conduct an OTP. And within that OTP, under that OTP, you can have an extension for medication-assisted treatment. And medication-assisted treatment is very important because we are able to save lives. It's an evidence-based practice. It has shown people to do well, being assisted with medication. Now, methadone is a direct agonist. It stimulates the mu-opioid receptor directly. And so the right level of methadone sometimes can take away these craving that the patient may have. A lot of people are against that treatment. I personally don't utilize methadone, but there is, there is, there is room for methadone as well in terms of maintaining patient and keeping them safe. Patient can be on medication practically for the rest of their life, or they may elect to come off of medication. That should be a patient choice. And we have seen people across the country did well with OTPs, falling underneath medication-assisted treatment. Medication-assisted treatment, even in the counseling world, people do not report it that well because they remember with medication-assisted treatment that they remember the horror stories. But if you can replace what the patient is, what the patient need and monitor that while the patient become affirmed in the principles of recovery, you will see great benefit. And particularly when these patients have a peer who will monitor them, who will keep tabs with them, and who will counsel them, it works hand in hand. So MAT is an evidence-based practice. It can help save lives if it's done the proper way. Outpatient treatment or office-based treatment that physician runs is a little problematic because they're missing the psychosocial support. When we look at people leaving a residential treatment program, those patients are at high risk because what basically happened, normally, the opiates normally bind to the mu-opioid receptor. They've been without this medication for at least 30 to 60 days. So what happened to that receptor site? You don't regulate that receptor site. So that receptor site will make more and more receptors, and not just make more and more receptors, but those receptors become supra-sensitive. So just a small amount of opiates or any opiates will put these patients directly into a drug overdose. So keeping all of that in mind, you want to make sure that we are incorporating all the available therapies that can truly help. And we're not talking about freely methadone the way it's being done now. If it's done strictly and properly underneath the principles of medication-assisted treatment plus behavioral support, you have an exciting, and you have a patient that respond to treatment. And it's an option that we can utilize. So in conclusion, OTP and MAT has a room in this treatment arena. At this time, I will end my talk, and I will bring up Senator Rader from District 29.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Kevin Rader, I'm a state senator. I reside in Delray Beach, District 29, if anybody doesn't know or is unfamiliar. The majority of my district's in Palm Beach County, but I dip down into Broward, and I represent all of Parkland, all of Coconut Creek, in the northern part of Coral Springs. I've been a state House member for six years, and then I made it to the State Senate last year. And concerning this topic, and for brevity's sake, I sit on Health and Human Services Appropriations, where all funding begins for pretty much all of healthcare. So, and I guess the reason I've been asked to speak or come here was my interest in mental health, drug addiction, the opioid crisis that... the opioid crisis that, uh, that we presently are in the midst of. I guess the first thing I want to say is I want to thank, uh, the mayor's, uh, putting this together and her staff. This has really been an excellent presentation. Uh, the speakers have been superb. The information out there, I, I don't know if you watched me and I hope it's not okay, but I took pictures of a lot of the graphs that were going on and I texted them to people who I think should see them. I think the one that kind of resonates the most is the one that showed that we are 5% of the total population and we're 90 or 95% or 80% of, whether it be, uh, you know, the prescriptions or what have you. Just, it's a crazy statistic. Uh, before I get into my thing that I always like to talk about, it was just an article published today by the Sun Sentinel. I happen to go to a Democratic Club meeting. I'm a Democrat. And State Senator Kevin Rader said his one chief issue would be the opioid crisis. I'm reading it. Uh, "This is what I plan on doing my whole time," Rader said, calling it the only issue. Uh, he wrote, "I intended," but actually this is what I did last year is I, I put an amendment on the General Appropriations Bill, which is kind of a no-no. You're not supposed to do that. It's a way to get leadership a little upset at you that you're not working through the process. But, you know, with the lack of funding with the epidemic that we're having, I, I, I asked for an amendment for 15 cents on cigarettes, a pack of cigarettes, to raise $100 million for treatment. And, uh, he went on to say, actually this year I plan on doing it for a lot more than just 15 cents. But I, I think what really resonates in my head the most, every time I'm talking or every time I'm, I'm, I'm listening to people, I think of a statistic. I, I visited somewhere between 10 to 15 different rehab facilities over the last six to seven months. I've met about four of the seven managing entities which fund all of, uh, mental health in, in the state of Florida. And by the way, Sylvia, Sylvia Quintana is your executive director of the managing entity here in Broward. And she's excellent and superb and was sitting next to me. So I was lucky. I had the ability of sitting next to her and, and listening to her. No, she's excellent. And the, the statistic that resonates in my head all the time is somewhere between 90 to 93%, I've heard. What is 92%? What's 91%? It's the relapse rate of addicts. And, and, and everyone says it and it just comes off their tongue very easy. 92%? That's a heck of a relapse rate. All the money that we're putting into this and all the, the resources means that nine of 10 times you're going to relapse. So we're doing something wrong. We're doing something majorly wrong. What to do? So I've gone to a lot of these talks. Palm Beach County had something very similar, uh, a few weeks ago. Actually, for some reason, Chairman Latvala, Appropriations Chair Jack Latvala, who controls the purse strings of the budget and the, on the senate side, uh, brought it, brought it forth. Our county commissioner, our vice mayor Melissa McKinley has been, uh, an advocate of, she had a, an aide who, uh, whose daughter passed away due to opioid addiction. And we had, and myself, we had a panel, uh, very similar to this. Hundreds of people show up as well. And, 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 but we didn't give everyone about 20 minutes, half an hour to speak. Everyone had about three minutes. And, uh, it was very informative, very, uh, very well done. And actually, one of the issues I think I have, and I was just speaking about it, uh, with Sylvia, that we all work in our little silos. You know, I don't see, and I don't know if Palm Beach County and Broward County and Dade County, where it's huge, according to the statistics, are working together with some of this. When I say everything's working in silos, DCF, criminal justice, uh, the detox, first responders, it seems like there's no holistic approach, some kind of triage. Someone very close to the process, I'm gonna leave their name and, and said, said that we actually have, like, I have a family resilience office. Remember in 2011, one of the first things the governor did in his, you know, you know, less regulation, less government, was we got rid of the drug czar of Florida. Right as the pill mill crisis was, was beginning. And now as we're in this epidemic, it's one of the bills that I want to go forward with. I think we need the drug czar back. When the, uh, the surgeon general of the state, we have a new surgeon general, I can't remember her name, excuse me for that, for saying that, uh, she came in front of our committee to be, uh, to get voted on and she said she had three issues she wanted to work on, this, this, and this. And, and crazy as it sounds, one of her issues wasn't, wasn't the drug epidemic. I mean, what's going on there with opioids? I mean, over 50,000 people are dying this year from it. It's more than, it's almost the same if you could take all gun and all traffic accident deaths combined, all firearm, combine them and it equals the, the drug epidemic death in, in the United States. Uh, it seems like we're about 10% of it. So right around 5,000, it's right around, you know, we, we don't have exact statistics because I don't know how, but we're, we're, we're like a year behind. But 15 to 20 kids a day, I say kids because most of them are between 13, 15 and about 25, 30 years of age, are dying every day. This is just, this is just, you know, and, and, and when I say everything's, you know, what, what I've had mainly from Palm Beach, because again, most of my district is Palm Beach. I know the folks in Palm Beach, uh, very well. Not that I'm saying anything anti against Broward. But, uh, you know, I, I know first responders, whether it be police or, or, or fire rescue, who goes to save someone with Narcan in the morning and then goes to the same address in the afternoon to save them again. And the, uh, the resources it's taking from, from our first responders, whether it's learning new these medications, whether it's the, the, the time and the money that's being thrown into here, into, into that avenue. But, but I think one that's being not said is the mental health of our first responders to seeing this type of death day-to-day that, that, that we don't see or really hear about. Uh, Fire Rescue at the League of Cities Convention last week was telling me how they have a facility just outside DC and maybe, maybe the, uh, police do as well somewhere, where Fire Rescue go for mental health help. Because they're, they're, they're not used to seeing this type of, of death. But when I talk about a family resilience office, you know, what about like counseling, parent skills? Wow, the family. And I know, because I've talked firsthand and I've been in these meetings and these groups, these therapies, where you have 15 addicts around in a circle talking and how the parents and how the family is so, I mean, we saw that, it, it seemed like it was that 30-second video of how it affects families. Affecting the family is so vital. You know, life skills, education, job training. You know, helping transition back into the normal life, paying your bills and, and living a, a good lifestyle, not, not a, a bad lifestyle. And I have, um, let, let me say one thing. The Palm Beach Post, I know we kind of mentioned a little bit, has done extraordinary, uh, uh, work in this, in this avenue. Extraordinary, they lead the state in it. They had a, a, a front page of everyone in the state who had, not everyone in the state, everyone in Palm Beach County who had died in the last year and a half with a small little, not even a three by five, it was like a one by two or very small little pictures in color. And I take that, that front page headline and I bring it to a lot of different meetings. But I think when it gets to it, we need to, just as we're changing our attitudes now locally on what we're going to respond, we have to change attitudes of elected officials. The Republicans run Tallahassee. Unfortunately, this Just Say No campaign resonates with them. Why don't they just say no? We gave them one month of rehab. Why aren't they getting out of it? Why aren't they snapping their fingers? And I think that's one of the reasons why we haven't seen the funding. I asked DCF John Bryant, John Bryant, the, the lead of DCF, uh, the undersecretary, Department of Children and Families, how much is it going to cost to, to really fix, to help someone on an annual basis? He said the number 18 to $40,000. Well, you know, you just multiply math there. How many addicts do we have in the state? Is it 20,000, 30,000, 40,000, 50,000? I don't really know exactly. But it's an enormous financial commitment that we're going to have to have. Because if you've been abusing drugs for 15 years, 10 years, one month is not going to be a Band-Aid, it's not, it's not, it's not going to be a great help. It's barely up to detox before you're, you're kind of thrown out on the street. Again, it's everybody working in silos. It's not, it's not, it's, it's, it's one thing you try to fix one thing and what about the next thing and what about the next one? And I'm, I'm committed this session that, that, you know what? All the other issues will be taken care of. We have elected officials who education's their top thing, uh, healthcare, uh, you know, juvenile justice, the prison system, whatever. But there is no one in Tallahassee who is commenting on this on a daily basis. Last day of session, I'll just bring up this last example and then I'll get off the stage. Last day of session, somehow the governor, through an agreement, uh, got, uh, an extraordinary amount of funding at the last minute for the Herbert Hoover Dyke. It's in my district, so yes, I, I, I applaud that. Yeah, I think it was 50 or 70 million dollars of appropriation. And I said, and, and they skipped, they skipped debate when it came to this amendment. They went right from explaining the amendment to voting on it and that was it. And that was the last amendment of the session. It was the last day, the last amendment. The House had already adjourned, the Senate, this was, they were going to adjourn. And I ran up to the Secretary of the Senate and I said, "We didn't, we didn't have debate." It happens to be my district. And they realized it, so they opened up debate. Naturally, you know, you raised the microphone and I debated. And I thanked the governor for this appropriation. And then I did something that, you know, it's not sometimes the nicest thing to do, but I said, "It's really a shame that we're right about to gavel out a session. We're right about to drop the hanky. And we have absolutely almost no money, new money, state money. We have no practically new state money. We have this federal grant of 27 million that's going to run out. We lost the 20 million grant that we didn't even speak about. And we have no new money going into opioid treatment. In this epidemic that the governor declared the, the state of emergency, we certainly did a lot for Zika in a very short period of time. We didn't want to hurt the tourism industry. But when it came to this crisis, practically nothing." Now, it ends everything on a downer and certainly some people came up to me and said, "Rader, you know, you really shouldn't be saying stuff like that at the last. We should be thanking and..." But I just, I had to say what I had to say. So in that note, I, you have my commitment, we're going forward of working on this crisis, of finding money for this crisis and working with, uh, leadership on trying to, uh, leadership and, and communities, uh, experts on what we need to do going forward. Uh, thank you again, Mayor Sharif, for putting this all together and for this wonderful panel. I've certainly got a number of business cards walking around. Uh, and unfortunately, I'm, I, I like to usually stay to the end, but I, I just can't. I got other things going on in my calendar as well. So thank you again for allowing me to speak. Have a good day.
Please help me welcome Heather Davidson.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. You making it through? Okay, woo, I've got no more science for you. What I'm here to talk to you about today is United Way of Broward County's Community Response Team. We keep discussing that we are operating in silos and how the Community Response Team functions in our community is to break down those silos. We have over 60 volunteers from every single sector in the community. We have DEA. Of course, we have our wonderful partners at BSO, Fort Lauderdale Police Department, Bark, our private treatment facilities, our medical facilities, Memorial, all of our hospitals. I could go on for hours to list all of the partners that we have. Most of you in this room are partners with us through this project to address the complex issue of not only the opioid crisis but complex substance abuse epidemics in our community. The Community Response Team started about 18 months ago and our focus was on doing a community assessment to identify where are the gaps in our systems? When somebody overdoses, when they get discharged from the hospital or they referred to treatment, do they get a warm handoff? How long are they staying in recovery for? Are our EMS workers able to afford naloxone? Is our law enforcement able to carry naloxone? We had so many barriers in so many silos and so many issues with funding that we had to come up with creative solutions to leverage what we have here locally in Broward County. And that's really our strength in our community is leveraging, leveraging to do very much with very little. So I just quickly want to go through some of what the steps that we're looking at, where we've been and what our recommendations are for this coming year. We follow a four-pronged strategy through overdose prevention, or I'm sorry, through prevention and education being our number one priority. We want to focus on educating our students, starting from elementary school all the way up through high school. Also making sure that we have cross-sector trainings. Are we training our law enforcement with our EMS? Do medical professionals know what law enforcement does? Are our protocols aligning with one another? So last year, we had over 200 presentations in our community, including in our schools through the Opiate Speakers Bureau. We also were able to create media campaigns through our media engagement which resulted in over 21 million impressions in our community and throughout the state. I will show you an example of what that, what that campaign looked like in just a moment. We also, our second prong is to focus on overdose prevention and harm reduction. That's the naloxone superwoman. I'm glad she's a superwoman. But she is out there in the community to make sure that we have naloxone available. One of the bigger successes that we had this year is our law enforcement community began carrying naloxone and to date, we've had 10 lives saved just from them carrying naloxone in our community. We also have distributed more than 10,000 pamphlets that we created through United Way's Task Force, you can't see it, it's teeny tiny, but they're out front, on injection drug user safety guides. We promote syringe exchange programs because they promote public safety, public health, and they reduce infectious disease. Our third prong is road to recovery. It is increasing our treatment footprint. We need to make sure that not only do we have enough beds available, that outpatient treatment is also being expanded so that more individuals are able to utilize treatment. One of the successes that we had this year, we have to thank our for-profit treatment community. We have had a number of, of for-profit treatment providers, more than 20, have donated scholarship services from detox all the way through our recovery residences or our sober homes to ensure that when somebody goes into the hospital and they have overdosed, that they are able to be linked to a treatment provider immediately. So case managers through Memorial and Broward Health have that list available. We also focus heavily on influencing policy. We of course have to thank Senator Rader for his leadership as much as much of the leadership that we have in our state legislature focusing on behavioral health. This year, we had three policies passed that we worked on and advocated for in Tallahassee with the help of many of you sitting in this room. We have better structure now to report on our drug overdoses to the Department of Health so we know where to target the problem and know where we are going. We also have a recommendation which we want to turn into a mandate for peer specialists to be staffed in emergency rooms, all emergency rooms, to be able to provide that warm handoff to a treatment center. We also have tighter structure for the prescription drug monitoring program on when we are putting that information into the system. Previously, physicians had seven days to report into the system. That's been brought down to one business day. The goal again is to continue to mandate that throughout the state. We also worked on the marketing practice for treatment providers, which was targeting the, the unscrupulous practices that sober homes were involved in. And what this bill did was it addressed that substance abuse providers could no longer participate in fraudulent marketing practices and that they were no longer able to provide referrals to treatment providers or sober homes that were not certified. However, we will continue to work to make sure that our sober homes are supported, that they can become certified, and that we have more providers that will allow individuals who are on medicated assisted treatment to enter into their sober home. This is an example of the campaign that we utilized last year. Through the thanks, thanks to Dr. Malik and his map that he put together through where our overdoses were occurring as well as data from our Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue and Hollywood, we were able to use GIS mapping to put this campaign exactly where our overdoses were happening so people would see that in real time. So we've done a lot. So we've done a lot, but what's next? We have so much more to do. And even though at United Way of Broward County, through the Community Response Team, we act as a convener, we need more people to come to the table, specifically around physician engagement. Our goal this year is to move the needle on prevention. We want to focus on mandating peer specialists in hospitals, ensuring that the prescribing guidelines that were handed down by the CDC for a five to seven-day prescription opioid for acute pain, that that becomes a policy that's adopted by the Florida Medical Association, or that that becomes a law. We want to focus on building our force multiplier education out into the community. We need you to be a voice to take all of this information back to your networks. We need you to talk to your legislators so that we can make a bigger footprint. We in here are a room of geniuses. I know so many of you, and you've got all these big brains. We can make a difference if we work to the, if we work together. I want to encourage you to help us support what we have listed up here on the screen, including Syringe Exchange in Broward, our increased media campaign, educating our pharmacies to keep naloxone in stock. Naloxone is now available over the counter, but it doesn't, it's not stocked in the stores. So we want to make sure that we're educating our CVSs, our Walmarts, and our Walgreens to keep it in stock for families that need it at that time. In conclusion, I thank you very much for being here today. The hearts that you have to give back to your community, to learn more about this, I thank Mayor Sharif and Hearst Half for putting on this event. It's been wonderful and educational, and it's what we do now, how we take this information and how we put it into action is what is going to make the difference. So please, I encourage you to join us at the next Community Response Team meeting. It will be held Thursday, September 21st at 9:00 AM at the Broward County Medical Association. You can find the Opiate Action Plan, which has every single step and outcome, every single one of our partners listed, and how you can reach them at our website at drugfreebroward.org. If you need a training for your staff to do a S-BR, 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 a screening, brief intervention, referral to treatment, which is a very brief screening, which looks for mental health and substance use disorders, you can go to unitedwaybroward.org to sign up to utilize that tool. We do monthly trainings on that. And if you need to contact me, my contact information is right here. I look forward to working with each and every one of you, and again, thank you so much for your time today.
My name is Sylvia Quintana. I'm the CEO of Broward Behavioral Health Coalition, and I'm here to talk about the options that we have for treatment and hopefully prevention for our community. When you came in, there was a flyer that we had outside that talks about medication-assisted treatment and where we can get help for our loved ones or ourselves in Broward County. Thanks to the $27 million that DCF applied to the federal government, this is SAMSA money, we were able to secure for Broward County about $1.6 million for medication-assisted treatment, which is comprised of the newer medications that are available out there to either assist individuals in, in their recovery process via a substitute type of an approach or an antagonist approach, so that's the different types of medications that individuals can take. Narcan is also part of that grant that is coming through another means, which I think is FARA. The three providers that we have funded in the state, in Broward County for this purpose are Memorial, which is in the south end of the, of the county, Bark, which of course we have at the table, and they talked about their program, and in the north end, we have Banyan, that is taking care of the north side of the county. All three programs are very similar in nation, and they are able to offer medication-assisted treatment through this grant. However, as Senator mentioned, the grant is, is over in April of this year, and unless we get a second, a second award from the federal government, or the state puts in more money for this grant, we're not going to have additional services. We understand that the federal government is, is entertaining or willing, based on our implementation, to give us a second year. But I just want to tell you that this is a reality, because we all need to kind of like advocate for newer ways of dealing with the opioid addiction. And I think this is a new way that according to SAMSA information and research, seems to be doing a better job in helping our, our loved ones recover and recuperate their wellness in their life. In addition to just the medication assistance, there's counseling, there's intensive therapies, there's housing and supports for employment and so forth that are available to them through this initiative. So I just want to say that that is available. In addition to that, we have our traditional substance abuse treatment programs that I just want people to know of. We have addiction-receiving facility for adults and youth at Fort Lauderdale Hospital. We have Bark's detoxification program that I think most people are aware of. And also Memorial Hospital has an outpatient addiction program, and they have a very unique program, which is a maternal addiction program for detoxification that they started in 2015 as a pilot to detoxify women that were addicted to opiates and other drugs, and with a focus of, with a multidisciplinary team that have OB-GYN, parentnatal care, addictionologists and so forth, ensure that the baby is born drug-free, and they've done an excellent job, and they've received awards for this innovative practice, and I just want to tell you that that's available. And they've received additional funding this year to expand that program. We also have residential treatment programs throughout the county in different locations, and intensive outpatient and outpatient programs. And one of our biggest arms in this initiative also, this is a treatment part, is a prevention side. So we fund the United Way of Broward County with all of our prevention dollars in order to really focus on protective factors that youth and families can use to help them not choose using drugs as a mechanism to deal with their pain, or their suffering, or their mental illness, or even try it as a game to see how things are going. We want to continue with that effort. We really thank the United Way for all their support and all the things that they're doing in this preventive initiative. However, I'm sad to tell you that part of the cut of funding that we received through the one-time block grant allocation was $500,000 to this program, and that's something that we're fighting for, fighting back to get from the legislature. We really need the legislature to really replenish the funding that we lost last fiscal year, so that we can continue this treatment approach that is two-pronged, prevention and treatment, and recovery and support. Peer specialists are very important in this process for, throughout the whole treatment approach, including once they complete treatment. And we have this wonderful organization called South Florida Wellness Network that really helps individuals in their recovery process from addiction. And with that, I invite you to please take this with you, so you can refer folks to treatment as you find them, and you need, and they need them. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Let's give all of our speakers another round of applause. And we have Mayor Sharif and Mayor Ordus coming to the platform, so let's give them a welcome.
Well, thank you, thank you so much. Mayor, she's here. We want to thank you. What an informative day, wasn't it?
Yes.
And with all of that great information, it is 2 o'clock, right on time. Certainly want to thank Mary Lou Ty from the Broward League of Cities for helping us get the information out. Appreciate you, Mary Lou. Mayor, this has been great. This is our beautiful new city center. I'm just going to give a little five.
I was going to talk about it.
Oh, well, go ahead. You, you talk about my, our great new city center.
Well, they always say if you want somebody to listen to you brag, you never brag about yourself, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So anyway, we did the ribbon cutting on this beautiful facility several months ago, and I have to tell you that Pembroke Pines outdid itself with the state-of-the-art facility. This is a concert hall, and that's the mezzanine, right?
Those are balconies.
The balconies, okay. And this place seats, what, 2,000, 3,000?
Thirty-three hundred.
Wow. And they have a gallery named after the...
Mayor.
Frank. It's called the Frank.
The Frank.
All right, okay. So anyway, we invited you here, and they were so nice and kind to offer this venue to us, and I just want to say thank you, because when Mayor Ordus puts his mind to doing something, it really turns out well. And I think it was an awesome job with the catering. Give him a round of applause.
Yeah.
These are very comfortable chairs. Put those in my office, please. And I just want to let you all know that we want to thank our fabulous panel for spending their afternoon with us. Couldn't have asked for a better, better panel of experts, and I just want to say we appreciate your time and, and we are with you on this challenge. Mayor?
No, you've said it all, and we are available for rentals here. A great, great job by our panel, a lot of good information. This is just the first, I say, the first step, like I say, the US Conference of Mayors, very interested in this. Mayor Marty Walsh is the chair of that great task force. All the mayors and elected officials are very, very interested. I heard what Senator Rader said about addiction and how it's repetitive. We need to all get together and make this happen. So thank you all. All right, that's it.
Okay, with that, this meeting's adjourned.